which will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
Let's pray together. As we gather this evening to do the business of the city of Suffolk, we are thankful. We are thankful for this community, for this city, for our Commonwealth, and for our great country. We are thankful for the freedoms that we have in this, in this community and in this nation to vote, to assembly, to assemble, and to engage in public discourse. We are thankful that we are neighbors, helping neighbors throughout our community. We are thankful for the blessings of peace and relative prosperity in our nation. We are also thankful for the peacemakers in our world, and pray that they will have success as they try to share the blessings and the things that we are thankful for with the rest of the world. Amen.
Amen. The Freedom of Information Act certification is required at this time. Madam Clerk, please present the resolution for consideration.
Resolution certifying the closed meeting of November the 15th, 2023 pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3712 is presented at this time. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council, the city of Suffolk hereby certifies that to the best of each person's, each member's knowledge that only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of Virginia law, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting, were heard, discussed, or considered by City Council, the city of Suffolk, in the closed meeting.
Council motion would be in order. Councilman Johnson? We got a motion for approval from Councilman Johnson, Councilman Bennett?
Second.
Second from Councilman Bennett. Is there any discussion in the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We now move to approval of the minutes from the July 19th, 2023, and August 2nd, 2023, work sessions and regular meetings. And a motion would be in order. Council, Councilman Williams?
Move for approval.
Motion for approval from Councilman Williams, Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Butler Barlow. Is there any discussion in the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We now move to special presentations. We do have one special presentation this evening, which will be an update on holiday events. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council with us this evening is Teresa Earls, Tourism Manager, who will provide an overview of the upcoming holiday events. Teresa.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, Honorable Counsel, Mr. Manager. I am here to bring some holiday cheer for your council meeting. Before I get started, I want to make sure you realize that this is just a snapshot of things that we have to do coming up in the next couple of months. And we have lots of activities that are non-holiday related, including sports activities and things throughout the city for all ages. So I suggest that you stay involved in our presentation so you see all the websites and you know where to find additional information. But we'll start out with our ongoing events. Right now through the 25th of November, we have an exhibit called Stitched Treasures, the American Quilt Exhibit at the Suffolk Center for Cultural Arts. That's open Monday, I'm sorry, Tuesday through Saturday, 11 to 4. It's free and open to the public. And then we have an ongoing exhibit. It's the annual juried exhibition of Suffolk Art League members at the Art Gallery on Bosley. That's open Tuesday through Saturday, 10 to 5, and Sunday, 1 to 5. And again, it's free and open to the public. Now, this Friday, we have our annual grand illumination at Market Park, adjacent Seaboard Station Railroad Museum. It starts at 6:00. Santa usually arrives around 6:15. We'll have horse and carriage rides. We'll have caroling, music, visits with Santa, of course, and puppet shows and all kinds of fun things for the entire family. There'll also be concessions available for purchase and letter writing for Santa. That, again, is free and open to the public and at Market Park. On Saturday, we will actually have our farmer's market at the pavilion behind the visitor center, and that is our last regular market of the season. So from 9:00 to 1:00 at the farmer's market, this is your last chance to get some, some fresh vegetables and some baked goods and some crafts and things. But we have a few extra sales coming in the future, but it's our last official market. We'll have live entertainment and activities for families. On Friday and Saturday, November 17th and 18th, from 4:00 to 8:00 on Friday and 11:00 to 4:00 on Saturday, Refined Relics will be hosting their annual Christmas Open House and Artist and Gift Market. Also, on the 18th, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that Magnolia Drift Boutique, which is a new business, actually, in the Bridgeport area, they'll be hosting a holiday open house on Saturday starting at 9:00 as well. Now, next week, Monday and Tuesday, Suffolk Tourism is offering a special Thanksgiving market, so we are bringing in a handful of vendors that raise and sell turkeys and collards and all the fun stuff that you need for your Thanksgiving dinner. They will be at the Visitor Center Pavilion on the 20th and 21st from 3:00 to 6:30, so you can stop by on your way home from work, or you can slip over and grab some things for the weekend. Of course, we're really excited about our annual Festival of Lights at Sleepy Hole Park. Parks and Recreation oversees this project every year, and it's a free drive-through holiday light display featuring a variety of vignettes representing both holidays and Suffolk agriculture and a little bit of everything in between. You can see that it's open to the public from 5:00 to 9:00, November 24th through 26th, November 30th through December 3rd, December 7th through the 25th, and December 28th through the 31st. All you have to do is drive through and enjoy, and you can come back as many times as you like. Now, the day after Black Friday, we know Thanksgiving is Thursday, then Black Friday, and then Saturday is always Small Business Saturday. This is our chance for you to think big but shop small. So aside from all the big-box stores, it's your chance to really make an effort to support your local community, whether it is an independent business or perhaps an artisan crafter. So we have Small Business Saturday downtown. It was formerly known as Restored, but we're just celebrating small businesses, and we're going to have gifts and merchants and live entertainment, visits with Santa, games, and all kinds of fun from 10:00 to 4:00 in our downtown historic district along Main Street. And then Governor's Point will be hosting a Small Business Saturday Vendor Show as well, and they will have food vendors and door prizes and refreshments. And then Driver will also be having a Makers Market. So you can certainly get an early start on your holiday shopping at any one of these lovely locations. And again, that is Small Business Saturday on November 25th. Also on November 25th, the Riddick's Folly House Museum will be hosting an American Girl program featuring Kavi Sharma. It's the American Girl of the Year. And they have two seedings at 10:00 and 11:30, and while this is free and open to the public, you do need to make reservations. They will also be giving away an American doll of Kavi Sharma this year. And I don't know if you're familiar with American dolls, but that's quite a prize. Trust me on it. November 27th and the 28th, and then the 29th, all three days, there will be a variety of holiday-themed stained glass workshops at the Happy Hour Glassworks and Driver. Those are certainly wonderful workshops. They do require reservations and a fee, so you can look online to find those. But I would suggest you reserve your spaces sooner than later because they tend to sell out. On Thursday, November 30th, Knott's Coffee Company in the Bridgeport section of Suffolk will be hosting a Christmas cookie decorating class. Again, there are fees required. It's a serious cookie decorating class, so if you're interested, you can check that out as well. On December 1st, Frosty's Fun Land will be coming to Bennetts Creek Recreation Center, hosted by Parks and Rec. It is free and open to the public, and it's great for all ages. Then also on December 1st, Festival of Flags, celebrating the Afro Diaspora at the Morgan Memorial Library. That, too, is free and open to the public. On Saturday, December 2nd, from 9:00 to 2:00, we'll be hosting our 12th Annual Artisan Gift Fair at the Suffolk Visitor Center Pavilion. It's held in conjunction with the farmer's market, but it's definitely more of an artisan gift, handcrafted, homegrown-type merchandise and such. We will have face painting and balloon twisting, a DJ. We'll have Christmas caroling. And as always, it's free and open to the public, and it's a great time to support small business. Also, on December 2nd, the Bridgeport Plaza will be hosting their 3rd Annual Holiday Market. That's from 4:00 to 8:00, and they're also going to have Santa. So if you're familiar with that area, it's beautifully lit at night, especially for the holidays, so it would be fun for your entire family. On Saturday, December 2nd, will be the Jingle Mingle, presented by Suffolk Parks and Recreation at the Curtis Mill Tier Recreation Center. It's from 11:00 to 1:00. It's ages 4 to 12. It's free for children with an unwrapped new toy, and it's $5 for adults. On, well, the same day but a different part of town, we have Winter Wonderland, presented by Parks and Recreation, and that's at the Booker T. Recreation Center from 11:00 to 1:00, same ages, 4 to 12. It, too, is free with a new unwrapped toy and $5 for adults. The library will be hosting Around the World in 88 Sips. That is a wonderful afternoon tea event at the Planters Club. It's free, but you should probably go ahead and, and reserve your space. And the same day, but a little bit later on, from 5:00 to 7:30 at the Planters Club, they'll be hosting Queen Charlotte's Court. And it's described as, "If you like Bridgerton, you'll like this event." Dancing and heavy hors d'oeuvres and tea and fun. On Wednesday, December 6th, the library will be working with the Suffolk Art League to host I'll Be Gnome for Christmas. So that is a fun craft event at the North Suffolk Library, and of course, is free. And Friday, December 8th through January 26th, you can go to the Suffolk Art Gallery to visit the Winter Exhibits Stories and Stitches, which will feature quilts by the African-American Quilt Guild. And then on December 8th, How the Grinch Stole East Suffolk at Suffolk Parks and Recreation. That is free and open to the public, and I can say that kids seem to be awfully excited about the Grinch, even sometimes more so than Santa. On the Saturday, December 9th, from 12:00 to 4:00, Indian Point Farm will be hosting Christmas at Serenity Stables, which is free and open to the public. On Saturday, December 9th, from 1:00 to 5:00, Decoy Seafood will be hosting Candy Cane Carnival, and that is for all ages, not just for adults. You can take your whole family. And then Suffolk Tourism will be presenting Encanto, the movie. It's a great kids' movie, on Saturday, December 9th, at the Cultural Arts Center. The cost is $1 per person, or you can bring a new food item to donate to a local food pantry. We'll also have Mirabelle, if you're familiar with Encanto. She will be there, and we'll have some fun little activities for children. On Saturday, December 9th, we will have our annual downtown holiday parade through our historic district. That starts at 7:00. It kicks off on West Washington Street, continuing down Market, I'm sorry, Main to Market. And we have a great time every year, and hopefully it won't be 80 degrees, and everyone will come and enjoy kind of a kickoff of the holidays. On Friday, December 15th, the Suffolk Center for Cultural Arts will be hosting the Virginia Symphony Orchestra Holiday Spectacular. There are prices ranging from $35 to $40, and $18 for youth. It's a great opportunity to go enjoy some truly quality music and a wonderful venue. And we will be hosting Santa at the Suffolk Visitor Center, both Saturday and Sunday, December 16th and 17th, from 1:00 to 4:00. Bring your cameras, bring your phones, take pictures with Santa. On Sunday, the 17th, you can bring your pets, dogs, cats, snakes, lizards, guinea pigs. We've had them all. Please put your dogs on a leash, but it's a great time. In fact, I think the dogs enjoy it just as much as the kids. And also, too, we don't charge anything, but we gladly accept donations of supplies for animal shelter. And we work with the Humane Society as well to have a presence to remind people the importance of taking care of pets and adopting pets. On Saturday, December 16th, from 5:00 to 8:00, Kay's Acres will be hosting Light the Town, which will be a free holiday event and a great place to get your holiday photos with your family. January 1st through the 31st, the library is kicking off their winter reading challenge. And I know I'm not supposed to go past December 31st, but I had to. A sneak peek at January. Tourism is hosting the Beginning of Our Family Winter Movie Series. We're going to have Super Mario Brothers, the movie, at the Suffolk Center for Cultural Arts. And we can't wait. It's on Sunday, the 14th of January at 2:00 PM. By that time, you'll be tired of being in the house. It'll be a great chance to get out. And on the 17th, Portrait of Aretha, starring Cece Tenille, at the Suffolk Center for Cultural Arts, will kick off at 7:00. We do have tours still going through the end of the year. Right now, the ones that we have left with availability is our Historic Suffolk Narrated Bus Tour, our Great Dismal Swamp Underground Railroad Pavilion Tour, and our Great Dismal Swamp Safari. If you'd like to find the complete schedule and to make reservations, go to visit SuffolkVA.com. And this is where you need to pay close attention, because this is where all the extra fun stuff will be found. SuffolkPublicLibrary.com, visit SuffolkVA.com, and SuffolkVA.us/parksandrec. And as a reminder, I like to remind everybody to love local and buy Suffolk for the holidays and every day. And I'm happy to take any questions or hear any comments.
Thank you, Teresa. Do we have anything to do for the next couple of weeks?
If I had more time, the slideshow would be much longer.
And we got a little bit of everything for everybody. With that being said, Council, do you have any questions or comments? If not, Teresa, rest up. You're gonna need it.
I know. Lots of caffeine. Thank you.
At this time, we'll consider the removal of items from the consent agenda and adoption of the entire agenda as presented. Removal of any item from the consent agenda would only be necessary if any member of City Council wished to vote on a specific item separately, and a motion would be required. Questions and requests for information on specific agenda items can be addressed during the consideration of the consent agenda after the agenda speakers. Has any member of council wished to remove an item from the consent agenda? Hearing none. Additionally, City Manager Moore has information regarding public hearing item number 17. Mr. Manager, please provide City Council with an overview.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, item 17 is in ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to establish a convenience store with gasoline sales on property located at 1869 Bridge Road. Zonimac 5, parcel 16, 16G, 16H, 16J, count numbers 251119000, 251994500, 251118500, 253058400. It's a conditional use permit 2023-017. This afternoon, the applicant submitted a request to remove item 17 from tonight's agenda and from further consideration. With that, at this time, I would ask City Council's consideration of a motion to remove item 17 from this evening's agenda and adopt the remaining, remainder of the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Just for clarity, anyone who is in attendance tonight regarding public hearing item number 17, the city manager has advised that the applicant has requested to withdraw the proposed ordinance. Therefore, there will be no public hearing this evening in regards to that matter. Therefore, a motion is in order to amend the agenda, to remove public hearing item number 17 from the agenda, and to adopt a remainder of the agenda as presented. Councilman Fawcett?
I'll move to approve, Mayor.
Got a motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett. Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Second.
A second from Councilmember Butler Barlow. Is there any discussion in the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We now move to agenda speakers. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers in this time? Please explain the guidelines.
We don't have any agenda speakers this evening, ma'am.
Okay, hearing none. Madam Clerk, will you please present the items for consideration? I want to take a recess. No, just to take a break.
Consent agenda item number seven, in ordinance to accept and appropriate funds from the Virginia Department of Motor Vehicles Animal Friendly License Plate Program for animal shelter services. Consent agenda item number eight, in ordinance to accept and appropriate funds from the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality for the city of Suffolk's litter prevention and recycling program and extended polyurethane campaigns. Consent agenda item number nine, in ordinance to accept and appropriate funds from the Commonwealth of Virginia Technology Trust Fund. Consent agenda item number 10, a resolution to accept a donation of a Palmer's Dollhouse for the Suffolk Department of Fire and Rescue. Consent agenda item number 11, a resolution authorizing, excuse me, a resolution approving an application to the Virginia Board of Education School Construction Assistance Program for the Northern Shores Elementary School Edition Project. And consent agenda item number 12, a resolution to amend resolution number 23-R-042 regarding authorizing the city manager to execute a development agreement for the Glasscock properties. Tax map number 10-40 and tax map number 10C-43.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview of the items.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, in regards to item seven, the C has received funds in amount of $1,980 from the Virginia Department of Motor Vehicles Animal Friendly License Plate Program. The funds will be used for pet sterilization, for the pet sterilization program from proceeds generated by the purchase of animal-friendly license plates. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the revenues and expenditures of the consolidated grants fund budget by the $1,980. There is no local match. In regards to item eight, the city has received $38,145.93 litter prevention and recycling grant from the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality, which are used for localities litter prevention and recycling programs, implementation, continuation, and expansion. A portion of the grant will be used on the, on a public information campaign to discourage the sale and use of expanded polystyrene products. Adoption of this ordinance will increase the revenues and expenditures of the consolidated grants fund budget by $38,145.93. There is no local match. In regards of item nine, the C has received $7,000 in FY 2024 Technology Trust Funds from the Commonwealth of Virginia Compensation Board. The funds will be used by the Clerk of Circuit Court to pay annual fees associated with the Tyler Technologies Application, which is used for criminal and civil cases. Adoption of this ordinance will increase the revenues and expenditures of the general fund budget by $7,000. There is no local match. In regards to item 10, the city has received a donation of personal property from All First LLC valued at $4,958.80. The item donated is a fire training aid known as a Palmer Dollhouse. The house is a small-scale steel model of a residential structure that allows training staff to set a live fire within the structure to demonstrate fire behavior for recruits at the academy. In regards to item 11, Suffolk Public Schools is applying to the Virginia Board of Education School Construction Assistance Program for grant funding to assist the Northern Shores Elementary School Edition Project. Grant funding assists in constructing the 30,000-square-foot two-story addition with an expanded cafeteria, multiple bathrooms, and ADA playground and expanded parking lot. The project costs are estimated at $20 million. Qualifying projects are eligible to receive up to 20% of approved project costs, including planning, design, and construction. In regards to item 12, members of the Glasscock family who own approximately 92 acres in the village of Chucka Tuck desire to donate the property to the city of Suffolk for funding and establishment of future public park attached to Lone Star Lakes Park. Per the agreement, the C will take possession of the properties on December 30th, 2025. Approximately 65 acres will be dedicated for a future public park, park use, excuse me, and approximately 27 acres will be developed. Any proceeds from the 27 acres will be used to develop the park on the previous 65 acres. Adoption of the resolution authorizes the C manager to execute a development agreement with the Glasscock family and to accept the deed of donation for the property. Happy to answer any questions.
Council, if there are no questions about the items, the motion be in order to approve the consent agenda as presented. Councilman Fawcett?
I'll move to approve with the exception of removing item, the item number 17.
This is on the consent agenda.
That's already been removed, and that's not on the consent agenda.
Move to approve, Mayor.
Okay, we got a motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett, Councilman Williams?
Second, ma'am.
Second from Councilman Williams. Is there any discussion in the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We're now going to move to public hearing. We're now going to move to public hearings. Our first public hearing is in ordinance authorizing the execution of a lease agreement for box hangar number six at the Suffolk Executive Airport. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yeah, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Director Economic Development, Nick Langford, will provide the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor Moore. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. In front of you tonight is a lease agreement for box hangar number six. The lease is for Curtis Eads Flight School. This is the location of the hangar. As you can see there, it's right next to the executive office and also the barbecue restaurant. Just to go over briefly some details of the lease, it's unchanged from the previous lease that was executed in two thousand eighteen. It's twenty-four hundred square feet, eight hundred square feet of office, six parking spaces, and about twelve hundred square feet of outside space. Lease term is unchanged. It's one year with an optional for one-year extensions. The rent, the rent is nine hundred and fifty dollars a month. Just some quick facts about the Curtis Eads Flight School. They started in nineteen fifty-five as a family business at Hampton Roads Executive Airport. The primary offerings are advanced flight training, rentals of equipment, so rentals of airplanes, and then also discovery flights. And they relocated to our Executive Airport in two thousand eighteen. Staff recommendation is to approve the new lease, and I'll be standing by with any questions.
Okay, thank you, Nick. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address, and will receive three minutes to offer their comments.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address? Do we have anyone who would like to speak to this ordinance? Hearing no speakers, this public hearing is now closed. Counsel, an ordinance has been presented for consideration. What is your pleasure? Councilman Williams?
Move for approval.
Got a motion for approval from Councilman Williams. Councilman Johnson?
Second.
Second from Councilman Johnson. Is there any discussion in the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to cast your vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next public hearing is in ordinance to rezone and amend the official zoning map of the City of Suffolk to change the zoning from OI Office Institutional Zoning District to RU eighteen Residential Urban eighteen zoning district conditional for property located at seventy-one hundred Bridgeway Drive, zoning map six asterisk two G, parcel C, account number three zero six zero zero one three three six. This is RZN twenty twenty-three three conditional. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Kevin Wine, Director of Planning and Community Development, will provide the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. This is a project that we provided you with an overview of about two months ago, as it is a significant land use item. It meets the threshold as it will create over a hundred units. But this is a request to rezone property located within the Bridgeway Commerce Park from OI, that's our Office Institutional Zoning District, to RU eighteen Residential Urban eighteen zoning district. This property is located within the Northern Growth Area and is designated mixed-use core The property is further identified as zoning map six star two G star C. To the north of the property is the Bridgeway Commerce Park Warehouse Complex. That is zoned M one light industrial. To the south is the Rivergate at the Riverfront Single Family Subdivision. That is zoned RU twelve. To the east are some professional office buildings zoned O and I, and those front on Harborview Boulevard. To the west is the Gables at the Riverfront. This is a single-family subdivision zoned RU Residential Urban. The subject property is eleven point seven eight acres and was created by a subdivision plat that dates back to two thousand and five and two thousand and six. It was revised and recorded again in two thousand and seven. In two thousand and four, city council approved rezoning request RZ zero three zero three, which rezoned properties on the east and west side of Harborview Boulevard for the Bridgeway Commerce Park project. The subject parcel remained part of the Bridgeway Commerce Park as parcel eight C, as the land around it was subdivided and developed for industrial and professional The property is currently subject to the declaration of restrictions for the Bridgeway Commerce Park. As proposed, the eleven point seven eight acre parcel will be zoned, will be rezoned RU eighteen in order to construct an age-restricted multifamily dwelling complex. The conceptual layout depicts eight separate multifamily buildings arranged here on this exhibit, containing a hundred and ninety-two units maximum, which would yield a density of sixteen point three units per acre. This is less than the maximum permitted density in the RU eighteen district, which is eighteen units per acre. The twenty thirty-five comprehensive plan suggests a density of twenty-five to forty units per acre in this area. The proposed density is less than this minimum density recommended in the mixed-use core use district. However, this parcel is located on the fringe of the mixed-use core, across the street from the core support, which has a recommended density of thirteen to twenty-four dwelling units per acre. Also, the recommended densities may not be achievable on this property without increasing the height of the buildings up to seven stories or more, which would not be advisable considering the single-family detached communities across the street. The applicant has proffered this as an age-restricted development, as specifically as housing for older persons as defined in the Virginia Fair Housing Law. Wetlands delineation has been confirmed and does show some small isolated wetlands on the site. They are depicted on the conceptual plan, and these wetlands were previously mapped as areas of conservation in the covenants and restrictions associated with the park, which authorizes alterations of such areas only with written approval from the Army Corps of Engineers. The professional office buildings on developed parcels in the O and I district do have frontage on Harborview or College Drive. You can see them kind of lightly in gray on this exhibit here. All these properties are located behind professional office uses on Bridgeway Drive and have been developed with single-family or other residential uses, making this more appropriate than the current O and I designation of the property. The developer has provided a conceptual exhibit of what the project would look like upon its construction, and here we have that. This is similar to other product types they have developed for similar demographics. This is a conditional rezoning. As such, it is accompanied with voluntary proffers. Those are in your packet, and I must note, we received a modification to those proffers late today. You have those in front of you. As such, those would be the proffers that you consider when you evaluate this request this evening, and I'll touch on that last proffer. But what this proffer states is that all units will be occupied for housing for older purposes. Once again, this is tied to the definition in the Virginia Fair Housing Law, the Code of Virginia. The number of units shall not exceed a hundred and ninety-two total. They will be individually owned. They will be condo units and not, and not rented by a larger company. Common areas will be under a condominium form of ownership. Construction of pedestrian path connecting the site to Park Drive and onto College Drive would be a part of this request as well. I said I was going to touch on that modified and revised proffer statement you have before you. This would include proffer number six. In essence, what that proffer states is that along the frontage on Bridgeway Drive, they would conform to our special corridor overlay district requirements as it relates to front setbacks and landscaping. This does not front on a special corridor overlay road, so it's not subject to those requirements. So they would be doing this on top of our other development requirements for the site. So, like all rezonings, we evaluated against the comprehensive plan in addition to the unified development ordinance. Specifically, as noted in our report, we've outlined policies two-one, two-two, two-four, four-one, and four-five as specific actions that align with this request, request compatibility with those actions. Specifically, the property is in the mixed-use core district within the Northern Growth Area where higher density and intensity development is appropriate. Further, this area of Bridgeway Drive removed from Harborview Boulevard exhibits a residential character of which this proposal is consistent. I've already noted the trail that is proffered as a part of this request, but the property does advance the practice of confining multifamily development to areas having proximity as well as safe and convenient pedestrian access to nearby retail areas. This, like all rezonings, has been considered by our variety of development departments throughout the city to include public utilities, engineering, traffic engineering, fire and rescue. There are no objections from those departments as it relates to this request. The traffic impact analysis was found that the average daily and peak hour trips would be less than that generated by the byright office development that is permitted on the site. And the existing zoning doesn't enable byright development, although not necessarily economically viable in the short term, is consistent with the quiet enjoyment of adjacent and nearby single-family developments along Bridgeway. So, staff is recommending approval of this request as stated in staff's report. Additionally, the Planning Commission at their meeting on November sixth, twenty twenty-three, voted eight to zero to approve a resolution recommending approval of this application with the proffers as submitted. That concludes my presentation on this item. I will be happy to address any comments or questions at the conclusion of the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Wine. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address. We will start with a ten-minute period for the proponents, then an additional fifteen minutes for those in an opposition, and then five minutes for rebuttal.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address in this, that is in favor of this ordinance?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, and distinguished members of Suffolk City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Aaron Milliken, and my business address is fifty-one thirty-one River Club Drive, Suite two-ten in Suffolk. I'm with East West Communities and submitted the rezoning request and related materials for your consideration on behalf of Bridgeway Mosaic LLC. I want to start with a quick history of who East West Community is and its relationship to the owners of the property. Starting in the year two thousand and spanning over two decades, East West Communities, through its affiliates Harborview Limited Partners and Bridgeway Limited Partners, have developed the Riverfront Community. The Riverfront now encompasses seven hundred acres, over twelve hundred homes, and multiple retail, commercial, and office sites. We're also proud to say that we brought Town Bank to the Riverfront and Suffolk when they built their first member services center, and what a beautiful campus they have there today. East West developed the many beautiful open spaces within the Riverfront. We built the parks, waterfront piers, playgrounds, tennis courts, and the vast walking and biking trail that exists within the community today, and we gifted all those improvements to the Homeowners Association of Harborview. The general partners of these entities are the same ownership group of the Bridgeway Mosaic LLC, and this parcel being considered, for rezoning. Mr. Wine has already detailed in the staff report the many items to be considered. I do want to share a few thoughts as to why we are seeking the rezonings, the rezoning, and share what we've been working on based on feedback we've received. Now, the original Riverfront Community was about five hundred and fifty acres, and in two thousand and five, we acquired another hundred and fifty acres that abutted the community at the northern end of the property. We took this additional acreage through a rezoning, as Mr. Wine noted, and it went from M one and O and I to residential and O and I. The parcel we are hoping to rezone today kept its existing zoning at that time of O and I. So the question is, why didn't we ask for that to go to residential back in two thousand and five? Well, at the time of the rezoning, the work related to the F-NOD site was ongoing, and this parcel was still being cleared by the various site and various state and federal environmental agencies. The U.S. Army Corps of Engineers would not support a residential use until the work was completed. We could have sold it as an O and I parcel over the past several years, and it could have been developed under an intensive use, where buildings and parking lots would have been covered, been covering up most of the site. But again, we always saw this as a residential setting, and we are willing to wait for it to be cleared by the various agencies. It now has that clearance, and that's why we're here today. We strongly believe that a residential use is superior to O and I, and as I just mentioned, we've never marketed this property to sell under the existing zoning. There are no other O and I uses located internally within the Riverfront Community. An example of a permitted byright use would be an office slash warehouse slash flex space facility, office in front, warehouse, trucks in the rear. And in looking at the flex space ordinance, that could be a building of up to a hundred thousand square feet. That building could be set back ten feet off the existing right-of-way, and it could be sixty-five feet tall. That just doesn't fit in our residential setting in the Riverfront. In addition, the UDO standards that would be applied in O and I in regard to building facades, materials, finishes, architectural design are just inferior to those standards that would be applied in a residential use. This product would be a terrific addition to the community that doesn't have a fifty-five-plus neighborhood. Hampton Roads is severely underserved with fifty-five-plus communities. This would be a great location for fifty-five-plus buyers to live in Northern Suffolk in a home that's more reasonably priced. Lastly, this is very fiscally sound to the City of Suffolk. The fiscal impact analysis, as you saw in your council report, shows that there's a benefit-to-cost ratio of approximately three to one. So every dollar spent, there's three dollars made from all sources net revenue. So before we started down the road for filing for a rezoning, we met with the president and vice president of the Homeowners Association. They had some suggestions. We made some changes. We then met with the full board of directors of the HOA. These folks were elected by the seventeen hundred HOA community, the seventeen hundred owners of that community. So we shared our concept plans with them. They gave us feedback. We made some changes. We then, they helped us arrange a meeting with the community at large of the seventeen hundred owners, and we had about seventy owners in attendance. We met for about two and a half hours, listened to their comments, and made changes. So I just want to talk about what we heard here real quickly and the changes we've made. What we heard was all the trees need to be saved and the land left as is. Bottom line is, this property is going to be developed one way or the other. Trees are going to, they're going to be coming down. An O and I user, however, will be a lot less discriminating on that tree preservation. We're proposing much greater buffering in our concept plan. Mr. Wine talked about the proffer that we added today. Councilman Fawcett gave us some input and shared his thoughts about buffering the rear of the property from the, the M one facility that's back there and the truck parking area that's up against our parcel. So we made changes. We made several changes, and, and the, what you're looking at there is actually the latest and greatest. Mr. Wine, I don't know if the city council got the updated plan, and if they did not, and they want one, I brought extras, and I can leave them here for you to look at. But the buffering from Bridgeway Drive, the buffering from that building on the back-left corner is much greater in this plan than it was before. We heard that there wasn't adequate parking, and that parking will spill over onto Bridgeway Drive. The current concept plan shows three hundred and fifty-five parking spaces for a hundred and ninety-two homes, or about one point eight five spaces for each home. The census data and other studies used by traffic engineers show that in this fifty-five-plus demographic, each home will have about one point five cars, meaning there will be approximately two hundred and ninety cars in the community, and that leaves us about sixty-five spots for guests coming into the community. We heard that four-story buildings aren't appropriate. These buildings are approximately forty-eight feet tall. And in looking at the, the bulk regulations in the UDO, the, across the street in Rivergate, under their zoning, RU twelve, they could have actually had homes that were sixty feet tall. And in other zoning districts in the Riverfront, within the Riverfront for residential, buildings can be forty-five feet tall, and we do have forty-five-foot-tall buildings in the Riverfront. So this is just a three-foot difference. We didn't, we heard that folks didn't like the look of the building, so we spent several weeks working with an artist and coming up with a, a rendering that reflects more of those homes that you see in the Riverfront. You see finishes that are similar of stone, brick, hardy plank, board and batten, breaks in the plane of the, of the home, recessed porches, awnings, and other architectural details. in the plane of the home, recessed porches, awnings, and other architectural details. To wrap up, I think we've put a very strong rezoning application in front of you. It's consistent with the comp plan. We've listened to the concerns, and we've tried to work diligently to satisfy as many concerns as we are able, and we ask for your support and approve this application. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. We have our next speaker to speak in favor of this ordinance. We've got about two minutes.
My name is Michael Templeton. I live at 115 Beacon Run in the Riverfront Community. I've been there for 12 years with my family, but more importantly, I've been an area resident longer years than I care to tell you. I can remember when the only thing in Suffolk between the Village Inn in Churchland and George and Steve's Steakhouse in Suffolk was the purple lady painting purple telephone poles. I have a long history in this community. I am committed to this community. The last time I was here, I was here to fight development, which Mr. Ward helped us with. When Mr. Ward went with us to the Hilton Garden Inn, I'm sure he can tell you, the ballroom was filled to capacity fighting that agreement. As Mr. Milliken stated, in this event, we had a meeting, 70 people showed up. I know it because I sat in the room so I could count them. I am on this path twice a day, morning and evening, walking my dogs. I think that the project is a good-looking project. The OI zoning currently on the site would allow far more incompatible uses of this property to our residents. With the back entrance to College Drive, any freight, shipping, or large delivery company would enjoy direct access to 664, and residents would have nothing that they could do about it. They could just watch the semis come and go. All of you know here about the Riverfront's tax-generating capability. This is only going to add to that. Suffolk in my lifetime has always been revenue poor. Land-rich, revenue-poor. This is going to be 192 new residents paying taxes, creating new jobs. I would like each of you to realize that this project is going to be something every citizen in the city, in every borough, can get tax benefits from, for our parks, schools, and my time is up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, now we will now move to our 15 minutes for opponents. So we'll open that up. Is there anyone present who would like to speak in opposition?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you. My name's Lawrence Chivaski. I'm at 5104 Captain's Walk. I've been a resident of Suffolk and Riverfront for approximately 10 years. I'm new to the area, but I will say that development has been exponential. As the gentleman said, there was not much here. When I got here, there was nothing on College Drive, no retail. But my hesitation with this project, which I ask you to carefully consider, is the density. When I moved to Suffolk, it was the countryside, the country part of Suffolk, which is a city. It's not a county, I understand. But it's turning into a city. North Suffolk has changed in the past 10 years dramatically. The traffic is unbearable. Took me a half an hour more because of accidents. So what I ask you to carefully consider is the density, R18. Is it necessary to switch it to that high of a density? I understand developers need to make a profit. I want everyone to be profitable. We want people to pay taxes. But could it be single-family residents? Could it be condominium? Could it be two-story? I ask you to consider, gentlemen and ladies, when you rezone it from industrial or light office, to make it a lower density, like, and I'm not a developer, I'm not an expert in R12, either single-family homes or where there's more family communities. I'm over 55. Personally, I would not want to buy a house there. I wouldn't want to live in the condo. If I wanted to be in the city, I'd live in downtown. But we're bringing city into what's, I think, a beautiful country environment, and it's only going to get worse. More traffic, more congestion, and more crime. That's all I have to say. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, sir. We have our next speaker to speak in opposition.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, council. My name's John Luderman. I live at 102 Stowe Drive in Suffolk. It would be the Gables Community, which is nearly across the street from this proposed project. My family moved here, when the Air Force moved us here, about three years ago. I retired from the Air Force during that time and has since made Suffolk my home. My son goes to university right up the road from here. So when I say that it's important to us, even though it's a place that we haven't been in incredibly long period of time, I've lived all over the world, and it's the place that we chose to make our home. So this is why it matters so much to us. There's a couple of points that have been made regarding this particular project that we feel, as residents, we are in opposition to. The reason why is, in the very beginning of this, it was mentioned that there was a community meeting that was adjourned, that met with 70 community members out of the 1,700. Well, the reason why that number is so low is that was sprung on us very quickly. We found out about the rezoning when the signs went up. We made phone calls, and when those phone calls happened, this meeting was quickly cobbled together, and 70 of us still was able to show up at the drop of a hat. In that room, there were not many voices in favor of this project, but many were against. There are a couple of points of contention, one of the ones being that we feel that buildings of this size are wholly inadequate for our single-family community. There are no buildings in our community that are four stories, not one. There are buildings right outside of our community, and we understand that. They're in an acceptable place, but inside of our community, there is not. We feel that the parking plan is another point of contention for us, and that parking plan, as they exhibited, said, hey, there's one and a half cars. I don't know how many 55-year-old folks drive motorcycles, but one and a half cars will be in each family home. Well, the Suffolk Census said that the average family home has two cars, and that was the most recent census in 2020. So we already feel that the parking plan is going to be inadequate. We already see inadequate parking that has plagued our community already in the Gables area, where parking is spilling over into that bridge road, into that area, where it's just not acceptable. Now, the other thing is, we are told that this is going to be a 55 and older community, and that's great, but there are 55 and older communities. I haven't seen any data that says that that community is underserved, and there are 55-year-old and older communities in Suffolk, in the area, that aren't full. They aren't selling out. There's not a line out the door to purchase these. One of the things that I did when I retired is I started two companies, one of those being a real estate business. So I have some familiarity with demographics and housing, and unfortunately, it is not hard to find 55 and older communities in the area. And so if those aren't filling up, then why are we building yet another one? And when those don't fill up, what's the alternative? How do they fill those buildings? As we said, we want taxpayers. We want neighbors. We want citizens of Suffolk, but when we can't fill those with the 55 and older community, what happens? One of the other points of contention that we have is, we do have some green spaces. We do have some beautiful parks and common areas that are shared within those 1,700 members, but now we'll be adding several hundred more that may or may not become part of this community. Now, will they use these new green spaces, these areas? Absolutely, but we find that in many cases, the size of these areas, the usage of these areas are inadequate for what we have now, and now we're going to be adding, again, hundreds of units stacked on top of each other. I don't want to take up too much time, because I think we have some other speakers, but one of the things, I just wanted to maybe speak to you from the heart. As I said, I chose a life of service. You also chose a life of service. I would guess that when you decided to become a public servant, the first thought in your mind was, man, I really hope I get to approve a Solis condominium unit so a 55-year-old person can schlep their groceries from an open parking lot to a fourth floor. Probably not, right? What you probably came into service for was the same reason I did. I want to look out for my neighbor. I want to look out for my fellow citizens. And even in our wonderful invocation before this proceeding started, we said, we had the, and I'm going to paraphrase here, I don't remember it exactly, but we have the responsibility of being neighbors serving neighbors. Well, ladies and gentlemen of this council, your neighbors are in this room, and we are vehemently in opposition of this project, and we ask that you please consider the density, the parking, the incompatibility with the neighborhood that it's going to adjourn or abut, and quite frankly, base its marketing off of and base its sales off of this neighborhood that it's going to essentially come off of. If someone were to build this project across the street from your house, would you be okay with it? And if the answer inside is no, then I implore you to please consider that answer when you vote today. Thank you.
Do we have our next speaker, please? Our next speaker to speak in opposition. Do we have anyone else who would like to speak in opposition?
Tom Ryan, 119 Suffolk Meadows Boulevard, Suffolk, Virginia. I don't live in this community. I just want everybody to know that. On December, sorry, on 9/6/2023, Kevin Wine, our Director of Planning, stated, here we have an example up in Riverfront, Bridgewood Commerce Park development. Several years ago, we had a user on one of these facilities that proved very problematic to a new residential development that went in right next to it. We worked with both parties, and we were able to come to a solution as it related to the noise, primarily noise-driven, and they were able to build a noise barrier that alleviate, that alleviated a lot of those issues. So this is certainly a lesson to be learned. I have to ask you, is this really, what lesson has the city learned from this? Because as far as I was told last week, the city is taking that UPS facility back to court because that eight-foot-wall barrier that abuts both these properties has not alleviated that issue. So here, we're going to approve 192 units sitting, and I don't know, this is brand-new to me, but the original document that was in there was, these buildings were 10 feet from that property line of a 242,000-square-foot distribution facility with hundreds of tractor-trailers sitting behind it, actively moving 24/7. I don't know how we can approve this. You're putting these peoples, these people that are going to be moving in here, you're putting their quality of life at risk before they even move in here. And it's been scientifically proven that prolonged diesel admissions to prolonged diesel admission exposure can lead to serious health conditions like asthma, respiratory illness, and can worsen heart and lung disease, especially in children and the elderly, according to the United States EPA, which was dated May 19, 2023. Even with an eight-foot wall, you have eight four-story buildings going in here, an eight-foot wall, even if it was proffered, which it wasn't, wouldn't protect these people that are going to be moving in here. You'd be doing them a real disservice, and I just ask you to think about that as we move ahead here. Thank you very much.
We have our next speaker, please, to speak in opposition.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Bell. I live at 209 Stowe Drive, and that's in the Gables Community, right off of Bridgeway. I had a nice little speech prepared to give you all the information, but really, everything that I want to say has been said by the previous people that oppositioned to this project. So I'm not going to rehash all of that, but I want the council to consider all of the points that have been made tonight. I understand that the property, and I think a lot of us here understand, the property is going to be developed. We want you to look at the parking issue, the density, lower the density, make it more in line with what everything else. There is no four-story buildings in the Riverfront and Harborview. There are three-story houses. I live in one, but there are no four-story apartment-like buildings. And whether you call these condos or apartments, they look like apartments. So I just wanted to take, I wanted, and make sure that everybody understands that the residents that live along Bridgway are in opposition to this project like it's been played out. We are willing to go back with the developer, kind of look at the options that we have that's been done in the past with Rivergate, and we are willing to do that again. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker to speak in opposition. We have about three and a half minutes left.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Marty Russell, 3127 Summer House Drive. Like the gentleman who spoke earlier, also recently got here, courtesy of the Coast Guard, retired, and have done 40 years of public service, and we used to have a saying, "The appearance of inpropriety." Don't make it look like you want to do it if it's not supposed to be done. Has anybody been out there to take a look at it? Doesn't belong there. You can put a pig in a dress, it's still a pig. I do have some follow-up questions that I don't know that they can answer or will answer today. If these units are not sold to over 55 members, what happens to them? Can I buy six of them and then rent them because I'm over 55? Then they become apartments, not condos owned by people. Implied that these would all be individually owned by people over 55. Virginia Realtors, their website says renters tend to be younger than homeowners, under 34. So if those turn into rental properties, you have people that are under 34. 33% of renters have multiple children. So you turn that in from an over-55 community into something that now has multiple young families, and again, nothing against young families, everybody in here used to be one, and you have children. That road, places crossing that road, people aren't looking where they're going as it is. I walk my dog there three times a day. You have to pay attention. That's it. Just those notes, consideration, again, I know it's going to be developed, maybe if they knock it down to two stories or three stories, but the four stories, it just doesn't belong there. If you go look, you can see through, you can see to the distribution center. We're on Summer House. I can hear the distribution center all night, thinning those trees out for that. I feel sorry for the people that are in the townhomes right across the street because it's going to be worse. Thank you. Have a good evening.
We have our next speaker, please, to speak in opposition. We've got about a minute and 18 seconds, give or take. If anybody else would like to make a short comment in opposition.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm not playing. Thought I'd just come up since the opportunity and got a little bit. Everything else, people said. I live, my name's Mike Howell. I live in 101 Sharp Drive, part of the Gables. My concerns would be consistent with what is presently there down the road, single-family homes, duplex, some duplexes, condominiums, detached condominiums. I've lived there since 2012, when the Gables was first being built. We had the oppositions against Rivergate. Originally, it was supposed to be apartment buildings, turned into what it is now. I can talk to you about the concerns of traffic. You hear the density and people, Bridgway is non-observed speed limit. People do drive fast. Harborview Boulevard has racing on it at nights. It would be a real concern for people of an older age with less reaction times. There's a lot of traffic that comes through that Bridgway intersection and with the adjoining circle up above and the mixed use that's being built up there. There's a lot of density in that area being built. We just want something that's more fitting. We just want something that's more fitting to the environment and to our community. Thank you.
All right, that concludes our opposition time. We will now move into a five-minute rebuttal period if the proponents would like to engage.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of City Council, Vice Mayor. My name is Robert Barclay, and I live at 5111 Mariners Cove, and I've been a resident of the Riverfront for 21 years, and I'm also an attorney who's working with the applicant. As referenced by Mr. Milliken in his presentation, the applicant did engage with the Board of the HOA, the leadership of the HOA, and at the community meeting. And the applicant listened to the comments that were received from those meetings. And in particular, the issues that seemed to have been brought out at those meetings and tonight were buffering, the property, parking, the building height, and density. To help accommodate that, after the meeting, the applicant's done what you see today in the revised site plan. One of the things they did was to turn the westernmost buildings from perpendicular to Bridgway Drive to horizontal to Bridgway Drive. That allowed for a greater degree of setback, both from Bridgway Drive and from the warehouse property in the rear. In fact, it increased the buffering from the warehouse property in the rear to 90 feet. And we have setbacks now anywhere from 41 to 60 feet along the front. If you'll notice on that exhibit, that allows for far more of the existing mature trees to be saved, as you can see there's on the diagram of the areas that would not be cut. And that would create a significant buffer between these buildings and the surrounding properties. On the parking issues, that rearrangement also allowed the creation of additional parking spaces, bring the total number of spaces to 355. Again, the experts who for a living study parking and traffic say that in a 55-plus community, typically, you're going to need about 1.5 spaces per unit. So they'll have an excess of the neighborhood of 50-some spaces for visitors. And again, that's just based on what the nonpartisan experts say about how much parking is needed in these kind of complexes. On the issue of the building height, I'll just reiterate that right now, within the Riverfront, on, single-family homes are allowed to be 45 feet. So this is only three feet higher. And when you consider the relevant comparison, the relevant comparison is what could be built there, and by right, an office warehouse could be built on that property 65 feet tall and have a setback from the property line of only 10 feet. As a resident, I see that as far more intrusive to the neighborhood than a residential development like this. So in conclusion, I'd just like to say that we'd like you to go, you know, stay with the recommendation of both the professional planning staff and the unanimous recommendation of the Planning Commission, and approve this project as a positive attribute to the Riverfront neighborhood.
Thank you, sir. Do we have our next speaker, please?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Members of City Council, my name is Branch Lawson, live at 4009 River Park Drive. I'm the President of Hampton Roads Division of East West Partners. Pleased to be here. Just a few comments of rebuttal. We're developing a similar community, a 55-plus community in Isle of Wight County. The demographics there, about half of the buyers so far are single. Most of those are single widowed or divorced women. They only have one car. We don't have any residents in that community, and we've got, we've had 50 sales this year where there are more than two cars. So that point. The other point, 50 sales this year, there is a market for 55-plus. If there is not a market for 55-plus, that's our risk. It's a proffered condition. We cannot come back and ask you to change that. We have to live within the rules of the law. I will note that we've had these meetings within the community with the community leadership. I will note that we have not had any subsequent contact from members of the community to share, where they have wanted to share any of their concerns with us or discuss with us, problems that they may have. So we're there in the community, we're very prevalent, our office is right there, I live there, so just wanted to make that note. We're happy to meet with anybody at any time to work through the issues. And I'll yield my five seconds left. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That concludes our public hearing. Council, an ordinance has been presented for consideration, questions, comments, or a motion. Councilman Williams.
Move for approval.
We had a motion for approval from Councilman Williams, Vice Mayor Ward.
Second.
Got a second from Vice Mayor Ward. Any further discussion? Councilman Fawcett?
Yes, Mayor, if I could, I just would like to take and make a few comments on this particular property. First of all, I want to thank all the one folks that came out from the community to speak and be here that are not in favor of this project. You know, I didn't learn about this project until just probably a few weeks ago, and I started to get phone messages and people started to catch up with me and have a conversation with me. And the one thing that kind of struck me, a little odd that I really disagree with, is the community meeting that was put together, I have to agree with some folks, it was just kind of jammed up and put out there. Unfortunately, for the developer, I was not, or anybody from the community didn't call me and say, "Hey, we're going to have a community meeting," because I certainly would have been welcome to go out there, and I would have loved to heard the comments from the I have received comments, both in favor and against this project. And, you know, the Harborview Riverfront is a beautiful community, there's no question. It was well thought of when it was put in its stage of development. Homes ranging there from $500 to $1 million. East West developed most of that property out there, and have done exceptional work out there to develop the communities that people had the choice to go out there and move and live at. And it's a full community, pretty much. You know, the problematic part of this that gets to me a little bit is that monstrosity warehouse sits behind that tree line that's going to butt pretty close up to this property here. And the concern about that is I had the opportunity to go out there and sit and kind of watch the truck traffic for a while. You've got to go there, sit there and watch that truck traffic to appreciate some things that are going on there. It's a, it's a major complex back there between the large warehouse that you full, you approach on on the left, and then as you're going back, you have the UPS warehouse. The many hundreds of chassis, if you understand chassis are part of what containers go on, that are back behind that warehouse along with all kinds of trailers. Matter of fact, if you go there, that warehouse, they block part of the road entrances into their building with chassis. So if you sit there and you watch a tractor trailer come out, about every 25 feet, maybe, I'm going to approximate this, they got these monstrous speed bumps that these trucks go over. And when they hit those speed bumps, the noise off them trucks is pretty substantial. You know, my fear is building, and this is a great building, this is not, this is not a bad project. Considering the location, something's going to go there. Something's going to go there, whether this project goes in there or they go in there with an office warehouse complex, which is their next option. And they can do that, they don't have to come here, we don't have, even have a discussion about it. You would not want that there. You'd be facing a worse problem than you are facing with the business warehouses that are behind the property line now. So when I look at this, I look, when you turn into the first entrance off Harborview Boulevard, it's only a few, maybe a few hundred feet before you're going to start seeing where this project's going to start. And the access, I'm trying to wrap my head around traffic, I really don't know why there would be so much traffic because you have a major rotary within a block of this community that takes you right out to College Drive to 664. So, you know, that's a plus because that traffic's going to dump that direction, it's not all going to go up Harborview Boulevard. It's not going to go all the way up to the ends of the communities that are there now. So they're going to come out, they're going to hit a turn and either go on 664, or they're going to go maybe up on Harborview Boulevard to one of the businesses. The other part of this is the fact that, what concerns me is what could go in there if this project doesn't go. I do not want to see a office warehouse complex go there. Now, if one of the builders could come up and, I want to ask just a couple of questions if I could. You know, some of the emails alluded to, and some of you already talked about the quality of the product. We don't, people ask me, "Well, who's going to build this project? I mean, do you have a builder in mind at this point that's going to do this work?" Because they're concerned about the project, if it's built, to be the quality of being built that's out there now in them communities. And that's, that's a nervous point for them. I don't know, I couldn't tell them if there was a builder identified to do the project.
We do not, excuse me, come on, we do not have this under contract with any builder. We have worked with designers, looked at other products, and have put forth a building and design that we think would work, and the materials that you're seeing in the, in the building, it's going to be stone, brick, hardy plank materials. So quality materials, good-looking building.
Yeah, and I, I listened to somebody here, just spoke about it tonight, about, you know, it's 192 units, that's pretty aggressive. In today's market for 55-plus, that's an aggressive number of units to try to get kind of filled up. Have you done any market projections to see out there, what you are coming up with number-wise that are going to possibly even get you over a time span for this 192?
Yes, sir. And I believe that was a part of our rezoning package, and I can't tell you exactly what it was, but I believe it was in the range of 60 to 70 units a year, probably 60. 60. 60 units a year is what a market study suggested that we should be able to achieve there. So certainly, a couple of buildings at the very least a year.
Okay, so it's going to, it's going to take you a number of years to get that thing built out to eight facility buildings, I would assume.
That's the nature of our business, yes, sir. It's a long-term deal.
And what's your projection of when you would like to break ground? When are you going to start moving earth or doing the infrastructure?
Good question. If at all possible, we'd like to get our plans into the city within the next three months and hope to have some sort of ground disturbance going on before the end of June next year. There were some stormwater regs that changed at that point. We've got some massive lakes there in the community that serve as BMPs that would be utilized by this project. So things, that could possibly change if things are delayed past that point.
Yeah, and the one other thing that people don't realize, a lot of people haven't lived out there their whole life, but that was a site that was problematic to begin with because of the Army Corps made certain provisions that, and they kind of held you back for, how many years did they hold that project, any project back on?
I mean, the, the whole EFNOD project was out there for 35 years, I believe. So careers were spent by, by a lot of people there. And they asked us, they basically said, "We can't tell you not to go for residential there years ago, but we will oppose it." So you know how that goes.
And they're requiring you to do a hard surface to encapsulate?
They have suggested is to have as much pervious, impervious surface as possible out there. And we feel that there needs to be a balance with the significant stand of trees that we want to preserve and maintain, particularly on the top-left side, along the whole-left side, and wrapping around that first building on the left on, on the Bridgway Drive. Significant buffering there. And it's in our best interest to maintain as much of the tree cover as possible.
But you also, that green line, which specifically you identify that as on the right side of that screen, that green line that comes from the roadway up, you've identified to me, what exactly is that going to be again?
Yes, sir, and I don't believe that was really covered tonight. That's, that's a paved trail within a 30-foot easement that goes along the property line here, and there's another graphic that shows a bigger view. It goes up and turns right onto Park, which takes it out right where the traffic circle is, so it provides pedestrian access from that point up to the traffic circle, which there's not any sort of pedestrian access up there right now. And that's a proffered improvement.
Right. You also profit some frontage too, for some walkways and things of that nature.
Yes, and there are walkways in there right now, and we have told the, and we could not put it in the rezoning proffers that we, to connect some other places on Harborview Boulevard where there is not a current sidewalk, we were told that could not be a proffer. So we've, we've told the HOA that we will work with them to fund that connection basically in front of Columbia Gas. So the, the Riverfront has, is the most highly amenitized community in Suffolk, in Southampton Roads, and probably most of Hampton Roads. We've got miles and miles of sidewalks and walking trails and parks and paths and amenities and so forth.
And I guess you could probably say that this specific property is going to be part of the HOA Harborview community group, correct?
So that's, that is our intention, and it's the intention of the Board as we understand it, to promote that. It's in, it's in everybody's best interest to have these 192 homeowners to contribute just like everybody else does. So it'd be a significant boost to the HOA coffers, but that has to go to a vote of the membership of the HOA.
Yeah, but...
So it's our intention for it to be.
One other point is, could they not become a part of the HOA and decide they have their own organization within that?
Well, that's a good, another good question. This is going to be a condominium, so they will have their own condominium association just like folks in the Gables and other condominium parcels within the Riverfront. They've got a condominium association, and they're a part of the master association. They've got a condominium association and they're a part of the master association.
That's all I got for right now.
Okay.
The other thing I wanna bring up is they volunteered this Number Six proffer, which was a part of discussion that I believe I had with East West at their location, which was just a few weeks ago. So, I wanna say I appreciate you putting Number Six in. You know, the whole thing too is to do everything we can to preserve as much of that property without just exploding it out to nothing but a big giant complex with, you know, where we can save as many of those tree line and buffer as much as we can. I think kinda settles a little bit with people out there too because everybody wants to see that green space, for sure. You know, the other thing, I have talked to the HOA president as little as early as today, and it kinda shocked me because, you know, I get the letters that we got. We've got a few out of, you know, the possible 1,700 homes. There's very few people that wrote against this, and there's certainly some people here tonight that may have been involved in the letter writing. The one thing that struck me is he had a meeting as little as yesterday, he had a meeting. And as he had explained to me today, he had two people that responded to the meeting that he had yesterday about this project. And I was shocked that, that that he had said what little bit of people that were involved in this meeting. The other thing is, is kinda shocks me that out of 1,700 residents, it's, there's a lot of people that haven't said anything either way about this, and then I've heard some say they never got any information about it. And of course, the Board of Directors have stood on principle there and said, "We've, we sent notices to people, we've tried to explain to them what is going on." I understand that only 70 people could get to a meeting, which to me, I wish you would've had a couple of different meeting dates to see whether or not other people could've attended because, you know, it's all about hearing from the folks here. I mean, that's their community, they live there, they certainly wanna keep it a nice community. So, you know, I'm a little on the fence here, disappointed in some ways, but understand some things and another that, you know, the involvement was not as well as I thought it would be. I think you probably would've heard some of the different things. I mean, from the residents there, you probably would've heard some different comments to you as well had more people had an opportunity. But then again, if a notice went out and didn't respond, I mean, you can only do so much, you know, to get people to come and talk to you about it. And you certainly have a couple of things in your favor because, one, your office is right dead in the middle of it in Harborview. It's not, it's not a surprise. And you live there, so people probably know both of the folks that you and your cohort there live in the neighborhood. So, you know, I'm sorry this thing didn't get more attention. And it's gonna be hard to determine, I think the problematic issue, and we can't tell now, what I think is gonna happen in the future is those people that are gonna live on them third and fourth floors, it's gonna be problematic. And that's when, and you know what the old saying is, you know, if you move in there, you accept the place where you live, and you should do your homework around to be sure you know what's around you. But those people are gonna hear that tractor-trailer noise, hands down, they're gonna hear it. I'm not sure that I'm in favor of this project just because it has some issues that have been raised that I don't think enough of the residents had an opportunity to speak on this project. I think there should've been more time for people to be able to get into a meeting to to speak on this issue. I take exception to, you know, I go in Harborview many times a day. And I, I've sat on that roadway for the last week and a half where that project's gonna go, as well as I've sat on that construction road where that trucks are coming out. And I'm not sure where I wanna go with this because I don't want to kill a good project. But at the same time, I have to listen to the people that are living out there that have invested in those homes that are, got a good amount of investment there. And they probably didn't realize, no one moved on the Gables or in that area, probably had no clue when they bought their homes there or built them there or whatever, that there would be a complex across the street of that magnitude. This is not gonna be a small complex, this is gonna expand 11 acres. It's gonna be a pretty good sizable project. So, I'm gonna stop talking because these people are tired of hearing me and they just wanna vote and move on. But I felt like, no, I just, I felt like I just wanted to make my point. Some of you will agree and disagree with me, and I apologize both ways if that's the case because I just wanted to vet it out, my concerns. I don't live there. Probably would've liked to have lived there, but I picked to live somewhere else. But anyway, that's all I got to say for the time being, Mayor. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Councilmember Rector.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanna offer a couple of generalized comments. One of the nice things about having an applicant come before you, either with a rezoning or a conditional use permit, is that, you know, unlike you, Mr. Mayor, who woke up one day in Portsmouth and found bulldozers across your street, when they come in there and do something by right, the rezoning and the conditional use permit process does allow for a little bit of negotiation between either a homeowners' association, the neighbors, sometimes even the city and the developer to try to put the best project in place for either that rezoning or for that conditional use permit. My other comment is that, you know, I don't think any prudent developer in their right mind would invest the kind of money that East West Partners is gonna put into this project without having done some market research that says this project is gonna be a success, not only for themselves as a corporation, but also for the community as a whole. Then one other comment that I would like to make, and Mr. Barclay, I may need a little help with this, but I believe that when you do the IPO with the condominium association, you dictate in there somewhere, because I've heard this brought up, that if the condominium units don't sell to private owners, that they'll be rented. But I believe that the IPO in any condominium association is going to put a limit, a strict limit, on the number of rental units that can be had. Can you, can you help me with that? And then also, it would require a vote of the condominium association to increase that number, and if you increase that number beyond a certain percent, and I believe it's as low as 10%, the condominiums basically become unwarrantable, which means that a finance company on a resale is not gonna lend money for them. So, it's kind of in the condominium association's best interest to keep them all in the hands of private owners.
You're absolutely correct in that. And in addition to that, because it's gonna be age-restricted, we come under the Virginia Housing Rules, and every two years, you've gotta check how many, you know, to ensure that the residents are 55-years-old, and if they're not, there's an issue with that. And that all has to be written into the IPO and into condo rules. So, there's statutory requirements, and then there's the private contractual requirements of the condominium association that ensure it remains a 55-year-old community.
Okay, thank you very much. You, Councilmember Johnson.
All right, I'm gonna be fairly brief. I came into this thinking I knew what I, knew enough, but I don't think that I know enough. Kevin, I might have to ask you up for a minute, if you will, please. I think it's a responsibility of a councilman of a group like ours, not only to look after the residents and look after the builders, and this is a good project. I'm like Roger from that perspective. But we've gotta look after the future. What concerns me more than anything else, honestly, is 90-foot, is it 90-foot from the back of the last unit to the, to the facility behind it? Is that, that's what you said earlier, 90-foot?
As proposed and depicted on this illustration.
Okay, and then there's some 60-foot, 41 to 60-foot in the front, correct?
Yes.
So, tonight, we're gonna also talk about some things about warehouses and these kind of measures. And would this work with, if we were to approve that measure tonight? Would this be something we would allow as a city? See what my question is? As far as the amount of space from this development to the warehouse behind it?
So, you're speaking about the Ordinance Sex Amendment that's later on the agenda.
Correct.
The warehouse is in place, it has been constructed. Thus, it would not come into play unless they, it would not, unless they make modifications to that site, requiring site plan approval.
My question though, it's my problem, Kevin, honestly, is the noise. And just, I'm concerned, just like Mr. Fawcett, with the people that are gonna live on the top two floors down the road with the noise level. I've been there as well. The noise is not, it's not something I live around. And that really concerns me in the fact that today, that barrier of trees is an excellent barrier of trees. Are they gonna literally leave enough of those trees that it's gonna make a difference? Make enough difference to repel a lot of that noise? I'm concerned. I'm glad to see Item 6 over here, I think that's a great step. But maybe we're just trying to put too many apartments, you're not gonna answer this, I'm just talking, too many apartments on that piece of property. And then my other concern, and I might have to ask you to come back, is, and you know, the parking, he says, "No, not you, you're okay." I'll call you back though, I'm sorry. I just get your exercise today, right? The one and a half spaces per car, I'm much older than 55, and I have three cars. If I moved into a 55, yeah, well, come for, let me just make my comment though. If people are gonna move into these units that are 55 and older, they have children, and they're gonna want people to come see them, and I think it's not adequate to have just a space and a half. I think you're gonna run into real issues down the road.
Well, as I think we mentioned, we're providing for 1.85 spaces, so almost two. The maximum, I'm sorry.
It's all right, it's good.
The maximum allowed by city ordinance is two, as I understand.
The maximum allowed, is that correct?
So, we're almost right up to two.
To two.
And again, the community that we're developing in Isle of Wight County, half of the buyers are single, either divorced or without or never married.
It's still a concern for me, and just on a need-to-know, so he answers a couple of questions here. Elevators, does elevators in each unit?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, good. I might be coming to see ya, I just don't wanna.
No, definitely, elevators going up to the top floor, yes.
Compatible, okay, all right. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay.
But like the others up here, Suffolk is in dire need of this type of apartment. And I, you know, I'm not, I'm not a, you know, I'm not usually the one that says these things, but I do know that in particular Northern Suffolk, all you guys that live there now are gonna get older one day, and you're not gonna want those big beautiful homes. So, we're gonna need some apartments for people to move into. From that perspective, I think this is a good project, but I really am struggling with the fact of where it's being located and the fact that we've got so many people that it's gonna be, we're gonna have a problem with it. So, I'm not, I'm not, I'm on the fence right at the moment, I just don't know. Let somebody else speak, thank you.
Councilmember Butler Barlow.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm not sure who to direct this question to, but I'm wondering, what's the, does anybody know what the average cost of one of these units is gonna be?
Yes, ma'am. The units will, they will be from 1,100 to 1,600 square feet, and you're pretty much looking at 300-plus dollars a foot. So, it'll probably start in the 340 range and up. So, it's not inexpensive housing.
Right, so, and that was kind of my next question, is this not intended to be affordable housing? This is more high-end?
No, ma'am, it's, even though 350,000 in today's market is somewhat affordable.
Understood, and I did have the elevator question too, so thanks for that. And the other thing I wanted to ask, and I think you're the person to ask, have you considered something that's less dense and less tall that would, you know, kind of visually fit into the community that's already there?
As we have stated, the product that we're looking at is 48-feet tall, literally just a few feet taller than the tallest homes in the Riverfront. To get the sort of density that we're trying to get, and it's, as was mentioned by Mr. Wine, if we were to get the density that is proposed in that corridor, it'd take the building up to six or seven stories. So, instead of a monolithic building, we've kind of divvied them up nicely, separated them, given a nice buffer around it, and again, we feel that that works well.
Okay, yep, thank you. One last question, and I think this might've already been answered. Councilmember Rector mentioned this, the 55-plus.
Yes, ma'am.
And how do you make sure that it stays 55-plus? And is there any restriction on somebody buying a block of 10 of these and then leasing them out? I mean, but it sounds like that's covered pretty clearly.
And I think Mr. Barclay did cover that, but the state and federal laws are pretty stringent there, and there are the audits every two years to make sure that you're meeting the quotas, the numbers necessary to comply with the law.
And that would be even, like, if you were over 55 and you bought 10 of them and only rented them to over 55 people, would that still, I'm just, I'm, you know, thrown out.
Gosh, I don't know the answer to that, but I think Mr. Barclay did cover that in his conversation about the establishment of the condominium association.
Yeah, and I, because I think the idea of it being homeowners and not a rental complex is important to the community too. So, okay, thank you, that's all I have.
And again, for the price point, that's fairly expensive rental property.
Councilmember Fawcett has a brief comment.
Brief comment. I have, Kevin, you know, the question I have is, it's a 55 and older, 192 units, which is very aggressive. If something happens with the market or whatever, whatever, we've encountered this before where someone's come before us and got, you know, approved to do a 55 and older, to get to a point where, oh, we can't sell them all, we can't fill them all, do they have an opportunity to come back and ask the council to change it from a 55 and older, even though they profit 55 and older, to a market-rate sale unit? People wanna know that, if that's even ever gonna be in the equation, because that's a big deal, because you go from that to a market rate down the line, that creates a whole dynamic different monster for that neighborhood.
Yeah, great question. And the applicant always has the ability to request modifications to their voluntary proffer, should they choose. That would go through the exact same process as a rezoning request and require an associated public hearing before the planning commission and city council.
I just wanna make sure I know how that would kind of flow, because I don't want to, I don't want somebody coming and, I mean, it might fill them all. I hope that it happens if this gets approved, but we have seen it before. that it happens if this gets approved, but we have seen it before where somebody did this type of thing and came back and we, in, in that case, they, we did change it so they could go to a market rate, because it couldn't, couldn't accommodate or fill it when they built it. So typically, they only build as much as they got reservations for to fill them up, but I'm not sure how their plan is going to go as far as, they said they'd build two a year, but we'll see. Just had that question, because I'm always wondering if, you know, we get on the flip side of this and downrange, somebody comes in, oh, well, we need to change our proffer, and we need to do this. I wanted to know, it can be done, that's the point I wanted to make. Thanks. You got a question, Rob?
I can address that further, so, you know, yeah, you'd have to go back through the whole process of this, just like a rezoning process, but in addition to that, again, it's set up as a condominium. And so if you're going to make any changes after you've started to sell units, you've got to have the approval of those owners as well. So it's not like the developer can act unilaterally in the future. Once they've sold off condominium units, those owners have to be, agree to it as well, and that'd be very difficult.
Yeah, the reason I asked that question is because I had the question kind of posed to me about it, so I wanted to make sure that we got it out there so people can understand where it's going, if, and how it's going to go. So I appreciate it, thank you.
Council, any other questions or comments? If not, I'll, I've got a few, I'll be brief. I've been taking some notes and I've spoken to applicants on several occasions. I appreciate them coming forward with the changes they came forward with in the design and layout, the additional buffering, their welcome additions to the application. I mean, I'm going to try to look at it, I try to look at these things a little more pragmatically, if you will. You know, in a perfect world, that green space would stay there, and the folks across the street would get to enjoy that green space. But the reality of it is, it is O and I. So that opens it up for, I would consider, many other projects that you would find much more objectionable than this is. Particularly with the O and I designation, it's, it's only been months, I think it's been less than a year then since we created another designation for flex space, which allows for not full-blown warehouses, but a smaller version of a warehouse. And this qualifies for flex space, if you go into the U D O and look at what would be allowed as flex space in this O and I property, it would be much more obtrusive than what is being proposed here in the way of a residential neighborhood. That also has, is also, from a traffic standpoint, whatever traffic is going to be generating, and we can't, you can't look at what is, because what is will not be forever. You have to look at what could it be without, what it could be by right. And by right, there would be more traffic generated than it would be under this scenario. And you've got to consider that somebody paid a lot of money for that piece of dirt and something's going to happen with it. You know, they have not marketed it, and they have left it for residential because they thought that that was a better fit. In regards to the warehouse that was haunted, the setbacks that we're talking about warehouse, they have to do with the warehouse setbacks, which we're getting ready to take a look at this evening to increase. But when that was done, the setbacks were differently, so the warehouse is sitting right on the property line, if you will, of that adjoining property. That's not a good thing, but it has no bearing on what the setback requirement is for the property that's being built now, if that makes any sense. So the, the developer has to take that in consideration, because they've got to market the property. I look at it that the neighbors that are worried about the noise and worried about buffers and how it looks, I think you're going to have a partner in the developer there, because they have to contend with that adjoining M1 property. They should join you, and you should join them in any efforts that could possibly be made to mitigate the noise level and any other activity that's being generated from the M1 property. Once again, that M1 property is already there and it's already established, that is not going to change. So the setback requirement is a setback as it relates to this development, which all the setbacks are considerably more than what's being required under the code. So that's a good thing. It's also my understanding, nobody brought this up, but I believe there's a piece of green space that goes off to the west, several acres that has already been donated to the HOA. So hopefully, there will be a little bit of space there for the deer and bunnies to get to, but that space has already been given into the HOA. It's also my understanding that the HOA is okay with this. But in a lot of these cases, you know, you look at it, and I don't want it, you know, and I get it. But sometimes the alternative is not as favorable, or you would not be satisfied with the alternative. And in this case, that's what you're dealing with. We're not taking a piece of agricultural land and putting something on it. This is not open space, this is O and I. It's open for flex space and a lot of other uses that you would definitely find more objectionable. The, the age restricted is huge, the traffic patterns are different. It's not just the, the amount of the traffic, it's the time of the traffic also. Lots of times when you have age restricted, you know, there's, a lot of those folks, some are more retired, semi-retired, you know, they're not working nine-to-five jobs. So you'll find that, yes, the traffic is generating this much traffic, but it's also what time is that traffic going to be? So I think that's a plus to this property. The fact that, like I said, the flex thing, you could have a 65-foot-tall building with a 10-foot setback, and it doesn't have to be pretty. You know, for them to market this property, you've got to put yourself in their shoes and anybody else who's making an investment. They have to get a return on their investment, they have to do their market study, and if they do not offer the type of product that's going to attract individuals to buy those condos, then it's not going to work for them. So it behooves them to have an attractive product that will blend with the neighborhood as much as they can. It also behooves them to mitigate any of the circumstances or conditions that you kind of already stuck with, with the M1 property being adjacent to it. So with that being said, personally, I, I think the best decision is to support it, and I think it's also the best thing for the citizens. You may not think so, but I honestly, in my heart, try to do the right thing every time. The parking, I know you brought up parking, you know, the code says one and a half, you go to 1.85, so it's basically they've increased parking by about 19%. So they've listened to what you, what everyone has said, they've come up with a different, a different proposal, bigger setbacks, more vegetation in front, a larger buffer, and also the additional parking. So with that being said, if there's not any more comments from our colleagues, then Mr. Manager?
Yes, I may turn to the attorney on this, but with the motion to approve, I think we need to state with the amended proffer.
Yep. Yeah, so if there is no other discussion, I believe Councilmember Williams made a motion to approve. I need you to amend that motion if you still want to approve, make a motion to approve with the amendments, the additional proffers.
You got it.
Oh, dang, God. Wait a minute, now I got you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve with the amended proffer.
Perfect. Vice Mayor Ward, would you still like to second that motion?
Yes, I'd second.
Vice Mayor Ward seconds a motion. Is there any further discussion? Hearing done, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of seven to one, with Councilmember Fawcett voting in opposition.
Okay, we'll now move to our next public hearing, which is in order to rezone and amend the official zoning map of the city of Suffolk to change the zoning from A Agricultural Zoning District and R L M Residential Low Medium Density Zoning District to R L M Residential Low Medium Density Zoning District Conditional for property located at 539 Turlington Road, zoning map 43, parcels 19 and 19P asterisk 1, account numbers 150196000 and 153900100. This is R Z N 2023-4 Conditional. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yeah, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, again, Mr. Wine will provide the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. This is a property that you all should be familiar with as well. It, it did check our hundreds box, as they are proposing 113 single-family units here, so we briefed you on this about 60 days ago. But additionally, there was a rezoning request presented back in 2018 on this property for consideration. So the applicant in this case is requesting to rezone property from A Agricultural Zoning District and R L M Residential Low Medium Density District to R L M Residential Low Medium Density Conditional for the purpose of developing a single-family detached cluster development. The properties subject to this request are located within the suburban use district in the central growth area and are located approximately two miles north of the intersection of Carolina Road, Route 13, and Turlington Road, and additionally, is approximately two miles south of the Holland Road, Route 58, business corridor. The subject properties are located at 539 Turlington Road, and they consist of two separate parcels, parcel 43 star 19 and tax parcel 43 star 19P star 1. Parcel 4319, as I noted, is zoned agricultural. The second parcel is already zoned R L M, but it would be R L M Conditional upon approval of this request. To the north of the property is Lake Spate Colony, that's a single-family subdivision zoned R L M. To the east, we have single-family detached homes zoned R L M. And to the west of the parcel are some detached single-family homes, fields, and forested land zoned agricultural. To the south, you have the Meadows Landing Subdivision, which is a cluster subdivision zoned R L M. As I noted, back in 2018, the larger parcel, this is 43 star 19, approximately 100, approximately 81 acres, was subject to conditional rezoning request R Z N 2018-009. This was a request to rezone the property to R L M for the purpose of developing a cluster subdivision to consist of 101 single-family dwelling units. That request at the time was denied by city council largely due to some reservations regarding access to the property. There was an ingress egress easement located on the smaller parcel, 43 star 19P. It was not a part of the previous rezoning, and that is one of the reasons it has been brought into this request. The applicant, like I noted, is looking to rezone the entire 81.2 acres from Ag to R L M for the development of a cluster subdivision consisting of 113 units. The applicant has proffered the number of units at 113 units, not to exceed 113 units, rather, as a part of the request, which would result in a net density of 2.27 units per acre. This is below the 2.9 units per acre permitted within the R L M district and fits neatly in the recommended density within the suburban use district of one to five units per acre. Here we have a conceptual plan submitted by the applicant. Once again, this depicts the conceptual layout of the 113 units proposed. With all rezoning applications, we do evaluate the request in accordance with the U D O and specifically the 2035 comprehensive plan. Some important policies to note as it relates to this, that we found this proposal to be in compliance with, policy 2.2 of the, the comp plan to assure development happens in a predictable and orderly manner. This is important as the surrounding parcels along Turlington Road are primarily zoned R L M Residential Low Medium Density District, and this site would be developed at a low to moderate density and is a good balance of accommodating the recommendations of the suburban use district. Presently, there is an engineering plan under review, it's important to note, for phase three of the Meadows Landing Subdivision to the south. Once completed, there will be an existing right-of-way connection stub to this parcel as required and outlined in section 31612, F3 of the Unified Development Ordinance. Policy 2.4 states that you should promote compatibility and land use patterns. As I noted, there is numerous residential subdivisions along Turlington Road, including Turlington Park, Meadows Landing, Millstone, Lindwood, and the Brewers Meadow subdivisions. Policy 61A wants to ensure that the city's land use regulations allow for a variety of housing types, such as single-family detached, single-family attached, multifamily. This requested change in zoning would allow for an increase in density in this area, which currently only allows for one dwelling unit per acre. Proposed rezonings of this nature work to balance the more dense rezonings in the central areas of the city. This is a conditional rezoning. As such, we do have a voluntary, a voluntary proffer statement executed by the developer and property owners. Specifically, the, at the time of application, there was a deficit capacity at Kilby Shores Elementary School, which will serve the site. Kilby Shores Elementary School does have a CIP project associated with a rebuild, which would create additional student capacity there. As such, the developer is proffering advancement of capacity at Kilby Shores Elementary School to compensate for the 10 students that they will generate. Proffer number two, once again, goes back to that 113 single-family detached units. They will not exceed 113 single-family detached units. Additionally, they proffered this as a cluster subdivision, which comes with an excess of 20 residential design standards that are not applicable to conventional subdivisions in the city. Lastly, they have proffered transportation improvements as outlined in the traffic impact analysis that our Division of Traffic Engineering has reviewed and approved. So in closing, we have evaluated the proposed use against the criteria established within the U D O, and based upon this analysis, we've concluded that the proposed use and rezoning would be compatible with the uses established along Turlington Road, and we recommend its approval with the proffers submitted by the applicant. Additionally, the planning commission at their meeting at, on November 6, 2023, voted eight to zero to approve a resolution recommending approval of this application with those proffers submitted. That concludes my presentation on this item. I will stand by at the conclusion of the public hearing for any questions or comments.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Wine. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address. We will have a 10-minute period for the proponents, a 15-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five minutes for rebuttal.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address, and that is to speak in favor of this ordinance?
Good evening, Mayor Doeman, Vice Mayor Ward, members of council, and City Manager Moore. My name is John Napolitano. My address, 1492 South Independence Boulevard, Virginia Beach. I am representing Turlington Road Associates this evening, and as Mr. Wine mentioned, this did come to council a couple of years ago. At that time, they recommended approval, just as they were recommending this evening. The difference between then and now is, last time, planning commission did not recommend approval. This time, as Mr. Wine said, we had a unanimous approval, and we actually had a unanimous approval twice. In reviewing the minutes from the last council meeting on this, as Mr. Wine said, the big hiccup happened to be the easement that was at the north end of the product, of the property. There was some confusion on that. At that time, a woman by the name of Lacey Gross owned that property, she still does today, and they, while the developers had an easement over it, they did not own the property fee simple. Lacey Gross does own that entire property, according to our property search and our insurance on it, that she does own that property. on it, that she does own that property in whole fee simple. At the end of this, if we are successful with this rezoning tonight, we will be purchasing that property, so therefore, we will be able to build the road and dedicate it to the city in a fee simple form that is needed. This is a growth area. This is the area that the city entered twenty thirty-five code, put as a growth area. In fact, the city invested in a pump station to service this area. And, you know, there are some things, and I'm sure that there will be some opposition this evening, and the things that mostly that I've heard, because we did meet with the surrounding community, we met at the church there. The big thing, obviously, is traffic was one of them. As Mr. Wine said, we did have a traffic study done. Your engineers with the city critiqued that. There were adjustments made to that based on their recommendations, and they've signed off on the traffic study at that point. And there will be some road improvements in the front done if we're successful as part of our engineering. Schools, as Mr. Wine has already said, that's being addressed as well through the proffer, since there is a CIP for the elementary school. The biggest issue that we were up against when we spoke with them at the church was drainage. And that area does have some issues. If you look at the Planning Commission meeting on November the sixth, there were two folks here from that area. One was the pastor of the church, the other was a neighbor, and both of them spoke about the drainage concerns that they have. They also said at that time that, at this present time, they have drainage issues even in their front yards. When I was allowed to get up and rebut, as I mentioned at that time, and I want to be on the record again, you know, we're not going to be able to fix all of that. That's not really our responsibility. Our job, if we're successful, is to create a drainage system that does not exacerbate their situation. Now, what I did tell them when I met with them at the church that evening is that when we do our engineering, we understand that there are some drainage issues out there. If we can do some things in our designs, and we're not going to go spend a gazillion dollars, but if there's some things we can do in our designs that will help, we're absolutely going to take a look at that, and I promise that after our designs, we would come back and show them what we have done, or we're not able to do at that point in time. But we would come back to talk with them about the drainage and how we're addressing it for our community, and if we're able to help some of the surrounding areas well. We do have this evening, as Mr. Wine covered most of everything, but I do have our team here this evening, our attorney is here, our engineers are here, so that we'll be able to answer any questions that you all may have. In closing, I just want to thank you all for your service, serving on council and looking after the city of Suffolk. I thank you for your time, and I ask that you support our requests this evening, and we're available for questions. Thank you.
We have our next speaker to speak in favor of this ordinance. Do we have anyone else present who would like to speak in favor? Hearing none, we have fifteen minutes for opponents. Do we have anyone to speak as an opponent?
Good evening. My name is Ron Gredean, and I'm the neighbor he was talking about. I live at five, what is it, five forty-three Turlington Road. The drainage is the big thing. Right now, the church in my front yard, when we have heavy rains, and Turlington Road flood directly in front of the house. And the reason for that is, there's a ditch that runs north and south, and there's an inadequate culvert that crosses Turlington right there in front of my house. So when you're getting all that rain, it's just more than the culvert can handle. It goes up over the road and into my yard and in front of the churchyard. So, it's not his responsibility, but the city's going to need to do something about that culvert crossing the road. It's just a cold, hard fact. And the other thing is the flooding, and I know he's, I've talked to him, and they're going to do what they can do, but right now, you have a couple hundred acres of farmland, soaks up a lot of water. When you put all that asphalt and concrete and all those roofs in there, so much for soaking it up. So I just want that to be a consideration. I guarantee you that culvert is inadequate now, so it's going to be a problem. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have our next speaker to speak in opposition?
It's a funny feeling being up here in front of everybody. This is new for me. Good afternoon, and thank you for being here and listening to all of us. My name is Shirley Weeks, and I live at six forty Manning Road. I own the property next to Ms. Lacy Gross, who is the one that's selling to the developer. I owned it, and I sold part of it to her, and at that time, we wrote a contract with her attorney that part of the property would be sent back to me, and then I'd give her part that had her well and a small garage on it. Well, for ten years, I've tried to get that straight. I've had surveys done, title searches, everything, and finally, I lived out of state until last year, and finally, we sat down with her attorney, Mr. Johnson, and my attorney, Bill Riddick, and we came to a decision. She admitted she did sign the contract. She gave her attorney the money to get the survey finished, to submit it to the city, to get everything finalized, to change the lines on the surveys. And next thing I knew, two weeks ago, she has written a contract to sell it to the developers. I don't mind it being sold to the developers, but I don't like the fact that I'm not getting my property. She's doing, and we do have a legal contract, and through the years, I have tried and tried, and I have proof of everything I'm telling you here in front of me, and I don't want anything more than what the agreement said, but I just want her to follow through with that, and then she can do what she needs to do with these people. But part of that property that we agreed to is partly mine, and I'd be glad to work with them. I'm not against what they're trying to do, because I know that's progress, but I just, I don't like the fact that she's done this and just did what she could to cut me out. So, thank you for listening to me. It may not have anything to do with what I'm supposed to be saying, but this, that's how I feel, and, like I said, the attorneys know what's going on, and my attorney said, you need to go to the meeting and just share with them what's happening. So, you know, if you pass this, if you, I don't know if you could even put a stipulation in there that they have to follow through with the contract that she had with me before she ever wrote a contract with these people. I would appreciate it, and I thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. We have our next speaker to speak in opposition. Do we have anyone else present who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Hearing none, Mr. Napolitano, you have five minutes worth of rebuttal, if you'd like to use it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, let me address the drainage again. I checked with my engineer who is here, and I do believe that in our plans, one of the things is we need to address that culvert that the gentleman spoke about, whether that be cleaning it out, whether that, I think there's one barrel in there might need to be replaced, but that is something that we are going to look at in our engineering plans, and that might help the situation out there. So, as far as Mrs. Weeks goes, let me just say this, and my attorney is here, and he'll speak in just a minute. I became aware of this situation about a week ago. The contract that she is referring to is ten years old. The statute of limitations in the state of Virginia is five years. As I've told Mrs. Weeks, and I've told her on several occasions, since I'm now aware of this, should the rezoning not be approved, I don't have a dog in the fight anymore and not going to get involved. However, if the rezoning is approved, I did promise her that within the next few weeks, we would, I would try to put a meeting together, would put a meeting together, between myself, my attorney, her, her attorney, and Mrs. Gross and her attorney, to sit at a table and see if this can be resolved. What that resolve is, as I've told Mrs. Weeks, I don't know what that's going to be, but I will at least get all the party, because as I told her, I'm here on one side from Mrs. Gross, I'm here on another side from Mrs. Weeks. I'm where I don't want to be, and that's in the middle. So, someone is right, someone's wrong. I'm willing to get the parties together. That's the way I know how to fix a problem. Get everybody at the table and put it on the table, and let's figure out what the issue is. What that result will be again, I can't sit down here and tell you until everything is put out there. But as I explained to her, without the rezoning, I don't have a dog in it to begin with at that point, because all of my contracts are based on this being approved, and I can't be any help to her at that point in time. So with that, I think my attorney wants to address it as well, but I thank you, and we're still here for questions.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council. My name is Bob Brulow. I'm an attorney from Virginia Beach, Virginia, and I've been involved in this contract to purchase Turlington, all the title work involved for almost like six months. What I want to address very clearly is the claim that Ms. Weeks makes, that she has an interest in this property. She has no legal interest in law, in equity, of record, in the record room of Suffolk, or otherwise. There's no claim of record or off-record. She has now made an off-record assertion that she has an interest in the property. I have a deed here conveying this property from Mrs. Weeks to Mrs. Gross, fee simple, title, general warranty. There's no reservation in here for claim of interest. So, there is no doubt whatsoever, by the records of the city and the search we've done, two of them, six-year searches, she has any claim or interest. Now she says she has a contract. In Virginia, by Virginia Code, you have five years to enforce a contract in writing. What this really is, is a swap of contract of a piece that the applicant, Ms. Gross, owns on five thirty-nine. She owns it in fee simple. This is swapping of property. That doesn't grant you an interest. What grants you an interest in property is when you get the city approval to subdivide it and put a plat to record. There's been no effort in the first five years of Mrs. Weeks to get that done, because it hasn't been done. She has attorneys, it hasn't been done. Now, five more years, now we're in the tenth year, and there's this zoning thing coming up, she walks up here and says, I have a claim to the property, I have a contract. That contract is not enforceable in law, in equity, and they have a title policy from First American Title Company, one of the largest companies in the United States, guaranteeing Mrs. Gross that she has fee simple titled that property today. If there was a claim of record on a contract, they could have made that claim of record. Title search, I did a search too. No claim on a contract. This came up two weeks ago when she heard about the zoning. In short, I don't think she has standing to, for her opposition for a city council matter on zoning. Her claim, which is not enforceable, should be done outside of this room and not here. But the bottom line is, in short, the deed has no reservation. Mostly, if you're going to claim property like an easement, general warranty two, reserving a deed, no deed. Her claim is not good, she has no standing to do this. Any questions? Thank you.
That concludes our public hearing. Council motion has been presented for consideration. What is your pleasure, Vice Mayor Ward?
Move to approve.
Got a motion for approval from Vice Mayor Ward. Councilman Fawcett?
I'll second his motion. I'd like to ask the city attorney a question, if I could. Is there anything that you have heard tonight in Ms. Weeks's claim that would preclude us from going ahead with this rezoning?
So, it's not the role of city council to get involved in a property dispute. Our only issue is whether or not we have all the proper applicants and the proper signatures on the proffers. Based on the information that's been provided to the planning department, we do. We have the owners of both sets of property. In addition, since this claim is really on the property that fronts on Turlington Road, which is already zoned RLM, we're not really changing the position of the property owners anyway, so it really won't have any effect on this claim. So, no, there's nothing that hinders city council from moving forward with the zoning. Whether or not it can be developed, or there's issues, otherwise, that's really between the property owners.
Thank you. I just wanted to get that cleared up. Thank you.
Councilman Fawcett, did you second the motion? Okay, so we've got a motion for approval from Vice Mayor Ward, second from Councilman Fawcett, Councilman Rector.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just going to piggyback a little bit on what Councilman Fawcett says. I believe that this body has a lot of powers within the city of Suffolk, but I don't believe that enforcing a private contract between two individuals is one of our powers. Am I correct in that? Thank you very much.
Councilman Johnson?
And my comment on that is that I don't think the developer's going to move forward with this if he doesn't own the property and he's going to take care of it. So I feel confident that that's what will happen. This piece of property is in the Holy Neck Borough. It's zoned to be houses. Last time around, it didn't work for certain reasons, but this time around, I think it should work. I think it's time to recognize this area is going to be houses. I personally think that by putting it in the hands of a developer with a good reputation, he's going to build a good project, and I think it's going to be good for the community. I'm speaking, though, because that's not all I have to say. I've one more thing I'm going to say. But I do respect Mr. Napolitano. I think he'll do a good job, and he may even actually give us some houses that are more affordable than other houses. Maybe not inexpensive, but more affordable, so that people in this city can have good housing in all areas of the city. Reason I'm speaking, though, is in, I'm talking to my friend there, Mr. Robert Lewis, we do have a problem there in that road, and it may be that we have an opportunity to take advan, oh, did I say take advantage of a new builder? But my point being, maybe we can get that drainage problem fixed there, because it has been a drainage problem for a while, and I'm not sure whose fault it is, but maybe we can take care of it. The other thing I'd like to say, and I'm not asking for this now, but I think as we move forward and we continue to put all of these residents on a two-lane road like Turlington, we need to look at reducing the speed limit and making it safer for the people that live on that road. A lot of people may not like it, but I would like to at least put that out there for the city to start considering. That could help us save some lives and help us make it a better place for people to live. And with that, I'd say I give my full support to this project. Thank you.
Okay, we've got a motion for approval from Vice Mayor Ward, and we have a second from Councilman Fawcett. And before we vote, I just want to piggyback on exactly what Councilman Johnson said. It doesn't sound like the development's going to exacerbate the drainage issue, but while you're out there working with our staff, maybe we can mitigate the whole deal at one time, be able to combine our resources. So with that being said, we've got a motion on the floor and a second. Council members, prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Okay, before we proceed, we are going to take a brief recess and reconvene at eight thirty, in about eight minutes. in about eight minutes. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. I think we may have someone that's still on daylight savings time. Wait on y'all. I thought it was just the women all went to the bathroom together. No? Don't say that. Okay. City council is now back in session, I think. Our next public hearing-- Our next public hearing is an ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to establish a temporary shelter for indigent and homeless persons in similar facilities with onsite residential counselors on property located at 2361 Pruden Boulevard, zoning map 25A, parcel J17, account number 251317000. This is CUP 202320. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Again, Mr. Wine will do the staff report for this item.
All right. Thank you again, Mr. Manager, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Once again, this is a project we presented to you all around 60 days ago as a significant land use item. It is a city-initiated project and it would be for a conditional use permit to establish a temporary shelter for homeless persons with similar facilities with onsite counselors on property located at 2361 Pruden Boulevard. The property is located in the inner ring suburban use district and is located in the Suffolk voting borough. The property is currently zoned B2 and it is in our special corridor overlay district, SCOD, with single-family detached homes, zoned B2 commercial and RLM residential low-medium zoning districts to the north, south, and east, and there are service uses zoned B2 to the west. The existing site currently operates as a motel use and the proposed use will operate largely unchanged in the interior with only cosmetic improvements to the building to include painting the exterior. The office apartment currently on-site will be converted to an office and meeting space for facility management, which would provide intakes and meeting with residents to discuss resources. Physical improvements occurring to the property and the building will be done to provide managed control of approved individuals and security of the premises. These include a privacy fence to be placed around the perimeter of the property and security cameras placed around the building and in the main office. We do have an exhibit of the property as outlined here. The applicant has provided us with an environmental site assessment and no land disturbance would be proposed in association with this request. So as I noted, the city who's the applicant is proposing to utilize the existing motel site for a transitional housing use for homeless persons. The shelter will be managed by a third party and include onsite life and skill, job skill training, resident vetting, and intake as well as counseling service to approved individuals. The rooms will provide necessities such as a bed and a bathroom and will house up to two residents of the same gender. There will be no televisions, refrigerators, or microwaves in these rooms. The proposed project is in response to the Western Tidewater region being awarded roughly $1.4 million for planning and administering homelessness support programs. The proposed shelter will fulfill a need for temporary housing in the region and provide needed support and service operations for the region's homeless. The city of Norfolk has done a similar project in which they converted a motel into a shelter and the city of Suffolk is using that model as a guide to provide transitional housing and services for the homeless. These photos here on the screen show some of the resources from Norfolk Shelter that they provided that we, the city, are also looking to include at this location, looking to Norfolk as a model. These resources include a laundry room, a space for activities, and heating up meals as well as a centralized space to receive residents. Further, these are some pictures from the Norfolk facility, which we are looking to for lessons learned and as a model. We have some visualizations here of what to expect as it relates to some of the cosmetic improvements upon issuance of the permit. Here you can see enhanced landscaping along Pruden Boulevard as well as some needed cosmetic maintenance to the structure itself. In this photo, you have an additional angle of what those improvements could look like. So as with all conditional use permits, we've evaluated it against the criteria established within the UDO and the 2035 comp plan as it relates to the proposed transitional housing use. And we've concluded that the use can operate in a fashion compatible with the uses established within the neighborhood and thus we recommend its approval with the conditions outlined in staff's report. At the planning commission's meeting of October 17th, they did vote eight to zero to approve a resolution recommending approval of this application with the conditions noted in staff's report. That concludes my presentation on this item. I will stand by at the conclusion of the public hearing for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Wine. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address. We will have a 10-minute period for the proponents, a 15-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five minutes for rebuttal.
This is a public hearing. With first speaker, please come forward and provide your name and address and that is to speak in favor of this ordinance.
Good evening. My name's Kevin Hughes, 442 West Washington Street. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, the city of Suffolk. I'm not going to spend too much time going over things that Mr. Wine hit on because he did a really good job on the overview. And also with us this evening are a number of folks that work in that field that are very educated and work passionately with the population that will be represented in working in this site. What I do want to do is spend just a touch of my time on some of the things that we've want to reemphasize that are, I think, very important, but also some of the interactions we've had with the community. We've held a community meeting. We've interacted with folks during the planning commission as well and want to kind of reiterate what we'd like to do as we move forward if approved. And so as Mr. Wine mentioned, we've received $1.4 million from HUD through the American Rescue Plan program. This is a regional facility. Suffolk serves as the lead agency from our neighbors to the west in Western Tidewater. The facility will be servicing individuals. That was proposed. We will also feature a number of resources that will include temporary housing, identification resources, life skills, employment assistance. The goal is to move people forward that are in a difficult situation. Again, we do not have a facility like this in the city of Suffolk. We know there is a need for it. As you can see on the photos, once we interacted with the community, we realized there was a need to do some improvements to the facility. And so we want to bring down the monument sign. We want to put a new fresh coat of paint on there, landscaping, perimeter fencing, not just on the front, but perimeter fencing. Up front, we would want a decorative fencing and provide some additional screening there. We want that building to fit into the area, probably a little better than the current operation. Again, security will be very important to us and I think everyone around that area. So I mentioned the fencing that will be in place around it. We'll also have security measures onsite 24/7, 365. And then one of the things that I really want to touch on, as Mr. Wine mentioned, is that the city will be the owner. The goal is to put out a bid process for an operator. We've seen that model work in other localities and so that's the direction that we're heading in. It gives us the opportunity through the RFP process, from a timing perspective, to continue to communicate and interact with the surrounding area. And so this will give us opportunities to kind of take measure, talk, introduce our future operator with the community. It'll also help us establish additional goals that we'll want to have in our contract to make sure that we're being good members of the community, not just for the homeless that's trying to take a step forward, but also those that live in and around it. And so we're thinking about some open houses, some forums, really a lot of opportunity to interact through the setup of the facility, but then also check-ins throughout once it's established. And I'm here to answer any questions following the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. We have our next speaker to speak in favor.
Greetings. My name is Ronald Harvey and I live at 305 Pleasant Street here in Suffolk, Virginia. I live in one of the Star Havens homes where the opportunity to be able to change my life after going through homelessness and try to develop some type of reality of life to move on forward and to live life on life terms. Understanding living in this process at this time gave me the opportunity to be able to set up other things and get involved with housing apartments and stuff like that through homes and all that stuff. So this is an opportunity for me to be living in a Star Haven home to be able to be established. Because you know, once you are able to get everything situated like social security and all that stuff when you are partially disabled, it's hard to establish and become a positive citizen in Suffolk to be able to stay, keep from going back, doing what we used to do. So I thank you for letting me share.
Next speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, good evening. My name's Jim Granfield. I'm the public defender here, 610 West Constance. Forgive me for looking at my phone. I recently joined the 21st Century and my notes are actually there. First thing I want to emphasize, not every person who's homeless gets in trouble. But I'm a realist in my world. Here comes a euphemism. Being homeless increases the likelihood of, here's the euphemism, negative interaction with the police. I have a strange request. Approve this zoning request. Help put me out of business. That's not going to happen. Crime's not going away, but what kind of crime is going to decrease if you have a viable homeless shelter? The trespass, the drunken public, the this, the that. If somebody down in their luck wants to stay at the Regal Inn for 39 bucks a night and decides, you know, I'm bored, I'm going to go to 7-Eleven and buy a six-pack, that's not going to happen if he's in a structured homeless shelter with all those trained professional folks and you heard. folks and you heard, job skills, subs, all those kinds of things. So, I can't urge you enough to approve this. Put me out of business. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please, to speak in favor. A little over four and a half minutes.
Cut it short. Good evening. My name is Cheryl Griffin. I live at 107 Kings Point Drive. I know most of you are aware of the need in Suffolk area for the homeless shelter. I'm here today to try and dispel some of the stereotypes and fears associated with homelessness for those that have concerns. It is human nature to fear what we don't know or understand, and I hope to alleviate some of that fear. I have operated homeless shelters for 10 years, serving over 600 people from the Suffolk and Western Tidewater area. I began as a volunteer with my church the first year and immediately knew this was something I wanted to become more involved in. When I first started, I thought I would be helping them, and while I did, I found that they helped me more. They taught me lessons about myself and about stereotyping. I was shocked at my judgment of them. I soon discovered that they were not all lazy bums that didn't want to work and just wanted a handout. These were people like my siblings, my children, even my parents that often through no fault of their own became homeless. The biggest difference was that if this happened to my family member, they had family to pick up the pieces and help. Many of these either have no family or their family is in no position to help them. When COVID hit, government funds were made available, and I was asked to operate a hotel shelter program, which I have done now for three years. I have taken numerous courses in mental health and homelessness, sheltering and trauma, so I do know a little bit about homelessness and sheltering. I think people often confuse a homeless shelter with a halfway house or even a jail. These are not all convicts, drug addicts, alcoholics, et cetera. These are people that have found themselves no longer able to pay rent, utilities, gas, and car maintenance, to get to work, food for their families, medical costs, and the expenses of everyday living. Many have become homeless due to serious medical issues. This is not a place for people seeking handouts, freeloaders, whatever terms you erroneously use. It is somewhere for people to get help getting back on their feet, save money, get connected with needed resources and benefits so they can get back into housing and off the street. Shelter is not a permanent destination, but a step toward housing. Over the past few years, the aging population is the most concerning. Sadly, we have joked the past couple of years that we were running a nursing home. Last year, the median age was 55, and that number would have been higher, but I had taken in a couple that was in their 30s due to domestic violence, a 19-year-old that was four months pregnant, sleeping in her car, and a 20-year-old autistic boy who was living on the streets. These elderly are people that worked their whole lives, some recently lost a spouse that they depended on for income, and they can't live on their Social Security or retirement anymore. Last year in our hotel program, there were two over the age of 70, four in the 60 to 69 age group, seven in the 50 to 59 age group, and nine were under the age of 50, and they all either worked or received disability. Four of them were elderly veterans, three disabled. To give you an idea of who has utilized our shelter, two years ago, a 69-year-old man and his wife, he had seizures, was completely paralyzed on one side from several strokes, and his wife worked all day and had to care for him. Their school-aged grandchild would come sit with him while she worked in case he fell or had a seizure. They were able to find housing after staying in the shelter, getting connected to resources, and saving money. He has since passed away. A 66-year-old lady who had lost her husband and son in a wreck, and she had spent several months in the hospital with a broken back and severe injuries, nearly dying. She lost everything due to the accident, and when released from the hospital, she had nowhere to go. She was able to get a job and find housing after staying a couple of months in a hotel shelter. I heard one resident comment to someone to put them in their backyard. They are in our backyards. They're sleeping in the woods around you, and they're downtown. They're everywhere. You just don't know it because they don't look the way you expect and because we don't have homeless encampments like the bigger cities yet. My husband dreamed that he came home, and my house was filled with air mattresses, and my homeless friends were sleeping there. My response to him was, it could happen. Linda Humphries, Ph.D., said, "Perception is merely a lens or mindset from which we view people, events, and things." In other words, we believe what we perceive to be accurate, and we create our own realities based on those perceptions. And although our perceptions feel very real, that doesn't mean they are factual. Manager Kevin Hughes, Deputy Manager Kevin Hughes, mentioned that this hotel had about 400 police calls in the past 10 years. Over the past 10 years at the shelter, the police probably haven't been called 10 times, definitely less than 20. It is monitored, and rules must be followed. The problem of homelessness is growing each year, and there are more elderly, handicapped, mentally ill, and young working adults in our shelters each year. Sorry, I lost my last page. The problem of homelessness is not going to go away on its own, and I think some of you found out I'm not either until something is done about it. So, anyway, I support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I'm sorry. That concludes the time right now for the proponents, but we'll have a little rebuttal period. So, we'll now open up the floor for opposition. We have 15 minutes for opposition. If there's anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Hearing none, we got a five-minute rebuttal period if anybody else would like to speak in favor.
Yes, thank you, and good evening. Good evening, council members, mayor, vice mayor, and city manager. Thank you so much for your time, and thank you so much for the service that you provide to the citizens of Suffolk. My name is Rebecca Brown, address 2551 Eltham Avenue in Norfolk, Virginia, and I am here representing Senior Services of Southeastern Virginia and the Coalition for Homeless Elders. Senior Services of Southeastern Virginia is Virginia's largest area agency on aging, and our main office is in Norfolk. However, we do serve Suffolk within our service area. So, we have recently, over the last two years, developed the Coalition for Homeless Elders, and we have become very, very involved in the administrative activities of the Southeastern Virginia Homeless Coalition Continuum of Care as a response to the alarming and growing trend that is late-life homelessness. And I will also highlight, use this as an opportunity to highlight that within this trend, there is an alarming trend of first-time late-life homelessness. So, we know that this is not merely individuals aging into their homelessness. It's first-time individuals with circumstances that Cheryl was able to illustrate. So, we are here to emphasize that the shelter would be serving this population of older adults. And when we look at, it's the fastest-growing population of homelessness, and so this subpopulation is very important to us, and they are also extremely vulnerable on the streets. The shelter would be serving that older population. I would like to highlight that the mortality data that we have for the region illustrates this, that they're generally, the mortality rates for older adults experiencing homelessness is four times that of the general population. But here for our region, we know that the homeless, that this mortality data shows us that 53% of those who have died in the region experiencing homelessness are over the age of 60. If we drop that age down to 50-plus, the population is 82%. So, we know that these are older adults. They're simply not surviving their homelessness. They will be the persons who are served by the shelter. Shelter is certainly a key part of the pathway to housing, but in this case, with older adults, it is absolutely essential to their survival, and so we ask you to keep that in mind as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you, mayor, vice mayor, and esteemed members of council. My name is Charlita Waters, and my business address, too, is 2551 Eltham Avenue in the city of Norfolk. I work with Senior Services of Southeastern Virginia as well. Just want to elevate to the conversation and support, in support of this project. Not only am I with Senior Services, but I bring to you 13 years of direct experience working homelessness and housing services across the Southampton Roads area at my former nonprofit. And what I want to share with you is, not only is it a smart decision and a valuable decision to support a shelter project in the city of Suffolk, but it also is cost-effective. According to national studies produced by the National Alliance to End Homelessness, it costs about $35,000 per homeless person. That comes from great interfacing with the jails, with hospitals, with increased use of emergency rooms. So, when someone street homeless, it is clearly an increased burden on taxpayer dollars. And so, to create a shelter project of this magnitude, to provide the supportive services, the safe space over someone's head to support them as they move to the next level of life and be able to move to a better pathway forward, it is a return on your cost of investment on taxpayer dollars into the city's budget. So, I just want to bring that to the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, vice mayor, mayor, vice mayor, city councilman, city manager Moore. Thanks for the opportunity. My name is Phil McPhail, and I live at 110 Pitchkettle Point Drive here in Suffolk. And I am serving with CAPS, Coalition Against Poverty, in Suffolk on their executive board and also as a weekly volunteer. And I'm here representing CAPS in favor of this wonderful homeless project, which I consider to be the first step in the right direction. Just to express how great the need is, we have a housing crisis hotline. They receive literally hundreds of calls a day. CAPS receives at least 300 calls a month for crisis relief, and generally, a great portion of that is folks who are unsheltered and need our help in this area. We have had a night-day program in the past that many people are familiar with. This is where we go. We, different churches provide a week at a time for the unsheltered to have a place to stay overnight. We're unable to do that this year for a variety of reasons, primarily a lack of church volunteers. So, we've reinvented ourselves into the CAPS Community Kitchen for the winter season, and our role is going to be to use the churches again and their resources in the downtown area to provide a community supper. And folks will also leave with, and this is not just for unsheltered people, but those who are will leave with a bag breakfast and a bag lunch to go as well. We also plan to support any city-funded or otherwise funded organizations such as Cheryl's Winter Shelter in the past. We will be in charge of all the meals for her for that program. So, I thank you again for your time, and I'm excited about the possibility of having a homeless shelter in Suffolk so we can take care of our folks here. Thank you.
This public hearing is now closed. Counsel and ordinance has been presented for consideration. Question, comments, or motion? Councilman Fawcett.
Thank you, mayor. First off, I think this is probably one of the greatest things that has happened while I've been on council, to have something of this magnitude come. I know that some of us on council, the past years, have sat and talked to the city manager about needing, or have a need to get some of these folks off the street, particularly, I mean, in the wintertime and times where you see them and, you know, they need some help. And we've talked about this, and this is the first opportunity, and I want to thank our city manager and our staff and all the people involved that started working on this project, and he brought it, and I sat and spoke with him about this. I told him, this is a home run, if it ever was one. I said, because there is a lot of need. Now, we probably can't fill the need for everybody out there, but whatever happens, it's a life-changing event for somebody that goes and has an opportunity to go into a warm shelter, to get a shower, you know, to have an opportunity to lay their head down. And, you know, I was talking to my wife the other night, and I said, you know, it's getting cold out, and, you know, we don't realize it, but there's people out there that have no place to go. Yet, we prayed because we had a pillow to lay our head on and we had a warm place to live. And this comes close to my heart to see how we can help somebody. To me, this is greater than anything we do is to help something humanitarian, to help these people. And everybody that's involved or will be involved, my hats are off to you. We need to make this a great project. I know the city is going to, and we're going to see a great project, and we're going to see great things, and the people that come out of there are probably going to be better off in the long run. So, I've been waiting for this to come because I want to put my full support behind this because it's the only right thing to do. I wish we had a bigger place and, you know, we could put more people up. But, you know, we started here, and this is not the end, but this is, this is great. This is our first step that we've done this year. So, I want to thank everybody that does this, and if you've got a heart, this is the right thing to do, and there's no other way to go at it. And it's getting cold, and the holiday season's coming, and, you know, we're going to have several different weather events, and eventually we get this online, it's going to help these people, no matter who it is, or where they're from, or anything. It's all you hear about now is homeless people, vets that are homeless, and the mental health is the next thing in line. They all come together. So, this is a way to help it out. I'm going to shut up now, but I thank everybody very much. I'm fully supportive of this, and I don't want to take Mr. Richter's thunder away because I know he wants to approve this, and I would love to second it, but I'll wait on him. Thank you.
Councilman Johnson.
I must have pushed my button second. That's good. I also want to thank our city manager, city staff, everybody in the city that has really allowed us to push this thing forward, but I truly think it's deserved by you, the public, and the people that have been so diehard about it. Cheryl Griffin, I mean, you're one of many, but it's just, this has been going forward for some time now, and there's been a lot of conversation, and when the manager came up with this hotel idea, I'll give you credit for that, Al. We just all went, wow. This is something we needed for so long. People helping people, that's what this is all about. And it's one of the, I kind of feel like, Mr. Fawcett, it's one of the best things we've done since I've been on council. I'm so proud of our city. So, and this is just the first stop. There's so many other things we can do to make this a real thing that helps people, gets people out of the shelter, and gets them into real, real living. So, of course, I approve it 100% too. And I'll make the motion, then, John, you can second me. How about that? Can I make a motion? Make a motion to approve.
All righty. We get, who is next? Councilman Richter.
I've cut myself off.
You did? Can you teach Roger how to do it? No, I just, he's on.
All right. Your leg's on. Oh, you tried again.
All right. There we go. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just going to say, I was at that meeting that we had at the Hilton Garden Inn where this was basically presented to the public, and there were a lot of very legitimate concerns that were raised by the nearby residents, and virtually all of them had to do with safety. And I can't help but to think that with us putting a fence around it, having it manned, having the people that come in there vetted, and having rules in place is not going to do anything but make that situation a little bit better. So, you know, I said it that night, and I'll say it again, you know, the residents around this hotel, around the Palmyra area, give the city a chance. I think we can do it. I think we can make that property, you know, once again, something that maybe the city can be very proud of. And I was just, you know, if anybody doubts the need for a homeless shelter in the Tidewater area, you know, we get every year the Southeastern Virginia Homeless Coalition Annual Report of homelessness in not only Norfolk, Portsmouth, Chesapeake, but also the western areas, Isle of Wight and Southampton County. This is clearly a much-needed service for the city of Suffolk. Thank goodness, you know, we don't have the same problems that San Francisco, Seattle, and other cities do have, but we do have a homeless population. And Mr. McPhail is correct. You know, the churches work contributing mightily to house people during the middle of the winter, but I'm embarrassed to say a little bit, you know, my church is one of those churches. We just simply don't have the number of people anymore that can man a facility like that at night. So, I'm happy that the city's going to do this. I'm excited to see what's going to happen. I think it's a good first step. It's a, you know, good sort of bite-sized piece of property that we can deal with and manage and see how it goes and see whether or not we need to perhaps explore. manage and see how it goes, and see whether or not we need to perhaps explore other opportunities. Kevin, I do have one quick question. The fence that I see up here in front of the driveway now, how will that work? How will people access it? And then, if they're there, how will they get out?
So, when we toured the facility in Norfolk, they had a separate pedestrian access that was guarded as well. And then, the vehicle access was, was similar to what you see on the screen here. And so, everything was based upon, I wouldn't say, almost like a reservation, like folks know that they were coming. But you would be able to deal with people walking up that have called into the homeless hotline or are in the system itself. But it, cars are not necessarily welcome per se, but they're stopped and make sure that they are, they know they're coming and they're not just kind of showing up.
So, does somebody from inside the office open the gate? I mean, how, I mean, how does that mechanically work?
Yeah, so very similar to how you access the gate back here is what we were looking at.
Okay. And I don't know, do we have a first or a second or a third?
I'm confused.
I did. I did. Okay.
Councilman Johnson's motion, and you're the second.
Okay. It's getting late.
It is. All right, Councilman Bennett?
Thank you. This has been a long time coming. We have been talking about this for some time, and it really has touched my heart many days that I ride through town and I see the people sitting on the benches and different things, but the clothes and everything right there beside them. And I cannot thank CAPS enough for the years of service that they have given to take people off the street, y'all volunteers, to spend nights with them, feeding them, and making sure that they had a nice, warm place to stay and a good meal at night and in the morning when they would leave. That was a good start. You all have been talking, because you have talked to me quite a bit, about what you all would do to support a homeless shelter. And this is something here that, it's not a large step, it's a baby step, but I'm hoping and praying that we will be able to enlarge our territory in some other place that we can continue to help the people that's really in need. So, it's not only in Suffolk, it's in all of us, all the cities have it. We had no place at all to, people could call a shelter. I was at the DAV a few days ago and was talking to them as well about veterans, and they have a problem as well, with veterans not having a place to stay or go. So, this could open up a lot of doors to a lot of people, to give them a chance to get started over again, as the gentleman said. He got started, and it only took him a while to get, pull himself up by his bootstraps to move forward. It's not a permanent thing, but it's trying to help people till they can do better. So, I strongly, strongly support this. And I am a good friend of a lot of people in the Elephant Park area, and we talked about this prior to, and I didn't see any of them here tonight. So, that indicated to me that they was pretty much satisfied. And I think that the fencing and all, greenery space and all around it, I think that's a good plus, and that's very attractive, I think, to help to make people feel a little bit more, a lot more comfortable. So, again, I think this staff and everybody that put this together, I just commend all of you for a job well done. Thank you.
Counsel, we got a motion for approval from Councilman Johnson, a second by Councilman Rector. Just a quick comment before we vote. I think this is an outstanding project. When I first heard about it, when the manager mentioned, I mean, we kind of, I think the money was there first, and then the manager mentioned that this property may become available. I mean, to me, it just seemed like a perfect fit as to where it is, the fact that we actually had grant money to purchase the property with. Of course, it's not gonna take care of the improvements. And the fact that we do have such a need, I mean, I want to, you know, thank Ms. Griffin and Mr. McPhail Salvation Army, CAPS, churches, everyone who has addressed, volunteered to assist the homeless. It's always been one of the tough things for me as mayor sometimes, when somebody calls and said, "I saw a person out so-and-so, what am I supposed to do?" And I usually don't have a lot, you know, a loss for words. I, you know, I try to have an answer for everything, but lots of times, I don't have an answer. You know, you can try this, or you can try that. Well, now, we'll have the ability to actually, to provide, you know, some services, and I think some people have a misperception. You know, it's not a place to live, it's a place to transfer, to be there and get the advice and the assistance to move on and not back on the street again. You know, I would have to say that, I think it's, if there's such a thing as a win-win-win, and I look at the CUP, and the last thing it says is it's, is it in the, the public interest in welfare should be enhanced by the proposed use. This isn't should, it's will be. And it's a win-win-win. It's a win for our citizens, it's a win for the homeless, and it's a small win for humanity. If we put all that together, then the whole world will be a better place. So, with that being said, we've got a motion on the floor for approval. Council members, prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
The manager would also like to make a statement before we move forward?
Yeah, on this, on this shelter itself, you know, I sit up here with y'all, and y'all look at me, but I'm getting choked up here. But Kevin, Aziz, Nicole, Meg, Kevin, Gary, who was at the community meeting, it was a team effort, or it is a team effort. I just get to sort of deliver the message, but they're behind it. Thank you.
Okay, number 17's public hearing has been removed from the agenda. We'll now move to our last, what I believe is our last public hearing. Let me check that out. Yep. Which is an ordinance to amend Chapter 31 of the Unified Development Ordinance of the Code of the City of Suffolk, Article 7, Supplemental Use Regulations to Add Section 31-726, Warehouses and Warehousing. This is OTA 2023-7, and this was continued from the September 20th, '23 city council meeting. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Kevin will again give the staff report.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. This is an item that you all are quite familiar with at this point, something we've been working on for quite, quite a few months. To give you a little background, back in July, we were in discussions with the Planning Commission. Ultimately, they motioned that we put together some supplemental use regulations for warehouse uses. This is in response to there being no specific supplemental use standards for warehouse or warehousing uses currently in the UDO. These uses are permitted as a matter of right in the M1 and M2 zoning districts. So, we looked closely at identifying what could be some, some reasonable regulations to ensure that throughout the city where there are zoning districts, the properties owned in M1 and M2, where they may be adjacent to less compatible zoning districts, and how we could ensure their compatibility through some reasonable regulations. It's quite a history here. The Planning Commission, at their meeting back in August, voted seven to zero to approve a resolution recommending this text amendment. You all considered this item at your September 20th meeting, electing to defer this item to November 15th. So, here we are this evening. After that, we met with various stakeholders on this item. The citizen groups, we met with developers, engineers, as it relates to these regulations, to get some feedback, to modify them accordingly, to ensure they worked. So, based on these conversations, we, we have presented before you this evening some modifications to that original language, and I'll walk you through some of those primary As far as applicability is concerned, these would be applicable to warehouse, warehousing and distribution general. These are all definitions in our Unified Development Ordinance. Warehouse and freight storage, warehouse, wholesale and distribution centers. And these regulations would apply to the above uses when they are adjacent to public property, residential uses, institutional uses, recreational uses, and the public roadway network. So, the primary issues as it related to warehouse and warehousing uses, we noted that there may be potential impact, negative impacts as it relates to adjacency with incompatible surrounding properties, particularly developed properties. And the things we kind of honed in on in attempting to, to once again, regulate it in a reasonable fashion, is noise, traffic, and truck parking and routing. So, those were the, the main issues we attempted to address with these regulations. So, how did we attempt to do this? We kind of broke it down into categories, really noise, visibility being, being a key concern. We looked at enhancing the site improvement setbacks. We looked and took inspiration from our special corridor overlay district SCOD requirements, looking at the gateways into our city, understanding that development in those areas are, it's quality development, we have design standards in place for them. We took inspiration from there. Let's move these uses a little further from the, the public right-of-way. Not just the, the building itself, which remains the same, but it's the, the site improvements, the parking lots, the drive aisles, associated uses there. Noise, we wanted to identify ways to tackle noise. That's something that we hear regularly, that, you know, we send zoning enforcement action on at times. I know it's something that you all as council members hear from time to time. So, we wanted to wrap our hands around that. Truck and truck cab parking, the proliferation of trucks throughout on public rights-of-way, blocking things like cul-de-sacs in the community, or parking at businesses in their overflow lots, things like that. We wanted to try to get a handle on that and put the onus on the developer. Site access, we really looked at site access as it related to truck routing. How are trucks getting to and from the site? Once they get off the site, how are they safely getting on freight corridors or reasonable major arterial networks? Landscape screening buffers, visibility is always an easy way to, one, minimize the visibility of these structures to the public right-of-way and adjacent property owners, but landscaping and screening buffers also really work to dampen potential noise as well. Lastly, we did identify that we have several developed industrial parks in the city. We did, we didn't necessarily want them to, after they've been subdivided, to see undue burden of meeting some of our setback requirements specifically. So, we did come up with a waiver process that would allow them to demonstrate a real need for a waiver of those. So, I know, I noted that we have modified some of the language, and I'm gonna breeze through the proposed regulations here soon because you all have heard it at this point. But, what has been modified from your September 20th meeting? That's kind of what I wanted to focus on here. So, we have revised the truck routing plan language to clarify that truck, the truck routing plan needs to identify roads being used by the truck only until the trucks, and this has been modified, mind you, until those trucks find their way onto a major arterial. You do have modified language in front of you this evening to consider that changes that language a little bit. We wanted to make sure that we understood the truck route up until that major arterial and the distribution once it gets onto that major arterial. I'll use North Gate Commerce Park as a great example. North Gate Commerce Park feeds into the Anderson Parkway, major arterial. We want all trucks coming out of North Gate Commerce Park to go right towards I-664. Those are things that we would like to have as a part of the site plan for us to review and approve as part of the site plan. So, that language is modified. And if you act on this tonight, I ask that you act on the amended version in front of you this evening. We wanted to clarify the developer will be responsible for associated signage costs on-site. This was not clear in the original draft of this presented before you in September, but we did clarify that in the version before you this evening. We did remove agricultural and conservation uses from the landscape buffer requirement. We heard some feedback. On the agricultural side, you have a lot of agricultural uses that are noisy in and of themselves. We recognize that we didn't want to place an undue burden on this potential development as it related to modified agricultural uses adjacent. As far as conservation uses, most of the conservation uses throughout the city, the overwhelming majority of them are publicly held lands anyway. It would still apply. So, that would be a relatively redundant requirement. So, we made some points of clarification related to when a barrier is required versus a berm. We, we could see that this needed a little bit of clarification in our original version. There are options. Essentially, you, you can give us a 60-foot buffer and install a berm with associated vegetation. Or, if you elect not to give us a 60-foot setback adjacent to those uses, you can utilize a 30-foot setback. And under that scenario, you would still give us a landscape buffer, but you could utilize a sound barrier wall instead, meeting VDOT standards. And lastly, we removed the timeframes with the specified maximum permitted decibel levels. The reason for this removal is, once again, this was a redundant requirement. It is in our UDO currently. It is in our performance standards, 31608 of the Unified Development Ordinance. It does not discriminate against uses. It is all about receiving zones and zoning districts. There are no distance requirements. Basically, if noise is being generated on a site that is zoned, say, industrial or being used for industrial purposes, there are decibel limitations between the hours of 10:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. that they cannot exceed. Those exist currently, those will not change. So, a quick, brief overview, I know it's been a long night, but the setbacks, we would require a 30-foot, 30-foot front, side, and rear setback when it is adjacent to public property, public rights-of-way, and abutting properties containing residential uses, industrial uses, or recreational uses. And this would apply to all buildings, drives, parking areas, stacking areas, loading/unloading areas, trash areas, and storage areas. And, and that's really how this differentiates from a building setback. You're taking all those site improvements and then establishing a new setback to get them a little bit further from the property line. You get a little further from the property line, you're gonna, you're addressing noise concerns. You're addressing visibility concerns by allowing for an additional buffer. The sound barrier, like I noted, noise, a key concern when it came to crafting this, this language before you this evening. There, there are options. So, within those required setbacks, you can opt for the 30-foot setback and provide us a noise barrier in conformance with VDOT standards, and at least eight feet tall and eight inches thick. That would be accompanied, mind you, with that required landscape buffer as well to reduce visibility. Or, in lieu of a sound barrier, you could provide a 60-foot buffer with vegetation and a berm. That berm would need to consist of a, one, it would have to be eight feet tall and supplemented with staggered rows of evergreen shrubs. Once again, tackling noise and visibility, excuse me. So, in the initial draft, we did note that yard mules, forklifts should be equipped, or shall be equipped at the time with OSHA-approved white noise backup alarms. Amazon trucks utilize these fairly regularly now. I heard one in the loading dock today. But we did, we did modify that. Where now it's a suggestion, we changed that shall to a We changed that shall to a should and further noted that equipment with the high-pitched type of backup alarms shall not operate between the hours of 10:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. Truck and truck cab parking, this has remained relatively stagnant from your original consideration and review of this, but we have specified that one truck and truck cab parking space be provided for every 10 warehouse bay doors in the facility. We believe, once again, that this is very reasonable. In a lot of ways warehouses build this into their site plans anyway. We just want to put it on record that they make it a key consideration. We wanted to ensure that these spaces are provided on the same parcel as the principal structure in use. We wanted for them to account for the need on their property so it's not spilling over onto public property. Additionally, we want to ensure that these lots be accessible to delivery drivers serving their facilities 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And additionally, that they must comply with our noise standards. Stacking spaces, we often think of stacking spaces for drive-through uses throughout the city. We took some inspiration there and wanted to ensure that enough stacking area for these trucks was provided on-site as to not inhibit vehicular flow on our rights of way. And as such, we want to ensure that on the site, four stacking spaces be provided per stacking lane for these uses. The key concern there is ensuring that there's enough of a queue length to get these trucks off the road. Because if they're on the road, then they are blocking laneage that could be used otherwise to move traffic. And also removing potential hazards and conflict points. Additionally, we clarify that it needs to be located on the site. We did modify our stacking and parking space size requirements as it relates to truck parking spaces. Originally, as presented, it was 14 by 75 feet. That has been reduced to the industry standard now of 12 feet by 60 feet. Once again, I touched on the truck routing plan, and this is the language that has been modified. We had a lot of success with some conditional use permits in the past, and we see this with solar developments now. They come in with a conditional use permit. We want to know how trucks are getting to these sites and how they are exiting the site. It's all about ensuring that we have something in an approved document that allows us some leverage to enforce it. So if they're required to provide this information as a part of their approved site plan, we then have an approved document to enforce zoning action should they not be complying to it. But we want to plan to detail all truck routes entering and leaving the facility and all roads within the city of Suffolk to be used by trucks utilizing the facility. And here's the amended language that's in front of you this evening, until the trucks are on the nearest major arterial. There was a slight hole in this language prior that didn't necessarily specify that we want to know where those trucks are going once they get on that major arterial. That's very important as well. We want to know that distribution. We want that plan to provide details of methods to be utilized to keep trucks on the approved routes and that the facility be responsible for the cost of on-site signage. Landscape buffers, the landscape buffers can be provided within the required setbacks as is common for development. They can utilize that buffer space to provide vegetation as required to provide some landscape screening. It would be a minimum of 20 feet wide along all roadways, a minimum of 15 foot along all public property, residential uses, institutional uses, or recreational uses. And once again, this is within that 30 or 60-foot setback that I talked about previously. So this is on top of the either noise barrier and 30-foot setback or the vegetated berm at 60 feet. We would require additional landscaping for visibility purposes there. So I did note that we do have some language in this that does allow for a waiver of the setback requirements only, specifically as it relates to industrial parks that exist in the city as of September 1st, 2023. The director would have the authority to waive those requirements, once again, only on the setbacks, and applicants must clearly demonstrate the need for the waiver by providing documentation in support of the request. So the planning commission, as I mentioned previously, voted on August 15th, 7 to 0, to approve a resolution recommending approval of the proposed text amendments before you this evening. And of course, at your meeting on September 20th, you deferred this action on this item to November 15th. So that concludes my presentation on this item. I will be happy to stand by at the conclusion of the public hearing to address any questions or concerns.
Thank you, Mr. White. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address, and will receive three minutes to offer their comment.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address?
I'm Denise Merton, 4041 Kingston Parkway in Suffolk. I'm here tonight representing Citizens Voice advocates to recommend that you table this ordinance for amount of time sufficient to publicly consider all viewpoints and make needed changes. When you voted to table this ordinance for 60 days, you recognized a need to give all stakeholders an opportunity to be involved in its review and revision. The reality is that despite our efforts, which were hampered by an ineffective public input process, none of Citizens Voice's recommendations were incorporated into the revision, and the ordinance was weakened, apparently at the behest of warehouse developers. The concerns you expressed with the ordinance at the city council meeting on September 20th and its revision at the October 18th work session have not been addressed. Councilmembers Fawcett and Johnson were concerned about truck routing. Citizens Voice supported that with recommendations for this section of the ordinance, yet no changes were made. Councilman Rector stated that the ordinance needed additional work to, quote, "strike a balance between being welcoming to the developers and protecting what we already have and looking out for citizens." Mayor Duman and Councilmember Bennett both expressed concerns that residents were not adequately protected. Mayor Duman said that some standards didn't offer enough protection and that a 30-foot setback was inadequate and suggested 60 feet or more. Citizens Voice agreed and provided specific recommendations, yet no changes were made. Inadequate setback requirements and the removal of the noise level standards that are lower than the UDO mean that this ordinance provides insufficient protection from the health hazards of noise and diesel emissions for residences, as well as vulnerable populations in nearby schools, daycare centers, health facilities, places of worship, community centers, and other facilities where people live and congregate. Citizens Voice followed the science in making its recommendation for a three-tiered approach to setbacks that would provide reasonable protections against these well-known health threats, which increase with the size and vary with the type of warehouse operation, yet no changes were made. The implication that we need not be overly concerned with the provisions of this ordinance because there isn't much remaining M1 and M2 property for warehouse development is both irrelevant and short-sighted, given our experiences of the rezoning of agricultural land for Port 460 and the potential for similar rezonings. We have also heard hollow warnings of regulatory takings, creating lawsuits against the city, yet the U.S. Supreme Court has clearly established that cities may impose regulatory burdens that have a reasonable relationship to the project. This arises out of the principle that a community should engage in good planning and adopt regulations that fairly apportion the burdens and benefits of land development. We need a warehouse ordinance, but this one is not ready for prime time. Citizens Voice urges you to table this issue and provide clear guidance to the city for a more coordinated public input process and revisions that will truly provide the protections our city and its residents need. Thank you for your attention.
Our next speaker, please.
Good evening. Vice Mayor Duman, Vice Mayor Ward, members of City Council. My name is Barbara Nelson. I'm Vice President of Development and Transportation Policy with the Port of Virginia. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. I'm here tonight to express the port's appreciation for your thoughtful leadership in the development of the ordinance that's before you this evening. The city of Suffolk is an important port-centric community to the port, and we view this ordinance as an effort to balance the interests of the community by providing a level of certainty and development standards. We appreciate, again, your consideration, and thank you again for your time this evening.
We have our next speaker, please.
Tom Ryan, 119 Suffolk Meadows Boulevard, Suffolk, Virginia, speaking on behalf of Citizens Voice. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, City Manager. We've already provided you a lot of information. It's late. I don't know how effective it would be to go over any more of that, but I do want to touch on a couple of points. We can all agree that noise, traffic, and truck parking are the top three citizen's concerns, and effectively mitigating all three of those continue to be a challenge. We might disagree on some of the ways to do that, but I think we all agree they must be addressed. We fail to effectively do that. We need more than just passing this or any proposal. Overall, we need to broaden education, enforcement, and coordination efforts, along with the policy changes, to promote the implementation of the recommendations. Just approving this proposal tonight will do little to accomplish those goals. We are recommending that instead of voting on this proposal tonight, we are asking you to table it and establish a working group that consists of representatives from the city staff, the council, developers, realtors, brokers, warehouse operators, freight carriers, VDOT, Port of Virginia, residents, and any others deemed necessary to get that done. We need to bring everyone to the table at one time to foster collaboration and to build consensus. I think you can all agree that we need to get this right, or we will continue to deal with these issues over and over. In addition to meeting with Citizens Voice, which we are very thankful of both city staff, planning, all the council, the mayor, we sincerely appreciate your time. We were informed that at least planning and city manager's office had met with developers and possibly the Port of Virginia. When the final proposal was finally posted just last week, after two months, none of our recommendations were included, and we had to ask ourselves, what did the developers and the Port of Virginia representatives that you spoke with recommend it or took issue with that we had recommended? We don't know. We posted all of our comments online, including our reference documents for full transparency for everyone to review, and we are here tonight to talk to them. But we have no clue as to what others' information was used to determine the final proposal. The citizens of Suffolk deserve full transparency and the ability to work together with everyone for our long-term benefit. The citizens are the ones that will be here when everyone else is gone, and we deserve Personally, I sincerely want to thank everybody for the time you've taken with us. I mean, this has gone on, seems like forever. Every time we turn around, I think, I'm retired, I got nothing to do. Well, I got more to do than I ever had before, but I got three seconds. I want to wish everyone a great Thanksgiving, be safe, enjoy the time with your families, and thank you for your time.
We have our next speaker, please.
My name is Elizabeth Bowe. I live at 209 Stowe Drive in the Gables. I only became aware of this warehouse amendment just recently, and it was brought to my attention because I am living it every day. Right across the street, I believe the name of the street is Wellner, there is, and it's been mentioned here already tonight in discussion of Mosaic, there is a warehouse on the other side of Gables that was put up, I believe, last year. When I initially saw this amendment, I thought, well, this is a great thing, but it doesn't do anything to help us now. And then when I started reading it a little further, I realized that it really doesn't go far enough. Because we experience the impact of the warehouse, the distributions center, the UPS customer center, every day, all day, sometimes beginning at 4:00 a.m. in the morning. We hear it throughout the day. I cannot sit on my back porch without hearing loud bangs, booms, clangs. It wakes me up in the middle of the night. I've heard other people in my community complain of the same thing. This has been going, I made my first complaint, I believe, sometime around January or February. I believe I sent you an email in regards to it, Mr. Fawcett. And then I have been making complaints to Mr. Hughes, who has been gracious enough to entertain my complaints. He's been very responsive, but there's been absolutely no change. So what we've been told is, okay, we'll be filed a noise violation, and then the warehouse has 30 days to respond. I think this is about the third time that we've been down this route. Nothing changes. I've been advised to document when the warehouse is making the noise. I've been advised to videotape it, and I've been doing that. But I can tell you, a sound recording that I made three months ago sounds the same than the one I made this morning. And sometimes in the morning, where I live, I live right on Bridgeway, and the, I can, sometimes I go for my runs in the morning, I can be a half a mile away at 5:30, 6 o'clock in the morning, and I can hear that warehouse. So you can imagine what it sounds like in my backyard. So if you are considering, I know it's not going to help our situation now, but if you are considering this amendment, please take into consideration how this impacts residential communities, and I don't think this one currently goes far enough. So, thank you.
We have our next speaker, please. Do we have anyone else who would like to speak to this ordinance? Anyone else president would like to speak to this ordinance? If not, this hearing is closed. Counsel, an ordinance has been presented for consideration. Vice Mayor Ward?
I'd like to speak to Kevin. I just want to ask a couple of questions. You noted that you talked with a couple of groups. How many organizations you talked with? Citizens, I know there's one of you talked with.
Yeah, we did meet with Citizens Voice as the primary stakeholder on one side of the situation.
Any other organizations you talked with?
We spoke with members of the development community as well.
Okay, so they said that they gave you some type of presentation of numbers, but there was no change. I mean, what, the numbers were off, or how it didn't help you none, or what was the problem with that?
From a zoning perspective, and I keep referring to these as reasonable regulations, we want to do everything in our power to offer protections, to mitigate potential negative impacts within our realm of authority, so it does not encroach into a world where it can be considered a regulatory taking. So in that regard, particularly as it revolves around So in that regard, particularly as it revolves around by right development, we wanted to do everything we could without getting into that gray area that does set us up for potential legal challenges.
Okay, you talk about the noise, you talk about the effect this kids, the school, and all that. You got any answers to that? I mean, how true is that? How do you detect that when they were talking about it affect the kids, the school, or all this type? What was that? No question?
I would say that's, those are some of the key considerations that we thought about in crafting this language, is, I think a good example site that we all shared with you is the Florence Bowser site. All of the property around the Florence Bowser school site right now is zoned M1. You could come in and build a warehouse with a parking lot right up to the property line of Florence Bowser right now, without these regulations. With these regulations, that becomes a 30-foot setback or a 60-foot setback.
Okay. I get caught up in something, then I want this to be the wrong thing. Okay. Just like, they have, when you build these warehouses, and they was there before the houses, and all of a sudden, people start moving there, because I know about Harborview, and I've been there 4:00 in the morning, and I've heard that noise, I can hear them throwing stuff on the truck. Okay, that's true. Now, what we supposedly doing now is going back, looking at, the councilman said, and see how we can change some of this. Warehouses are coming. What are we, our intentions of trying to make sure we so far away, we gonna be far away for the noise? I mean, I mean, you might look at me like I'm trying to, I'm not, I'm just saying, what are our intentions of? Because these warehouses coming, every time I turn around, there's a warehouse coming. And then people come up and say, they can't sleep, they can't do this. You know, sometime I feel like you listen to, we listen to certain people when they come up, and other people we not listen to. We said, we want to jump where the community do. Certain community, we're gonna jump for them, but certain other community, we just don't, we have a death fear. And I'm just sorry to say it like that, but say sometime, that's what I'm seeing. And I want to know, what are our intentions are? If people say, well, they come and talk to the community, and the community come up, how do we solve? We can't solve all this, but at least when they give them some answers, you know. I, like you said, if they talk about that, give them some answers, give them some response. You know, for, anybody come up and say, well, we talked with them, there's no change. We talked with them, we didn't hear no answer. If you can't do it, just tell them. That's, that's what I'm saying. You know, that's how I ran. You know, when they call me for a meeting, the first thing I do is, oh, hold up, I ain't giving answer. I call the department head. If you don't want to hear that, what they say, but I give, I give them some answers. That's all I ask, some answers, because I don't know the answer. And for people just to come up and say, well, we don't hear no answer, we don't see no change, I don't, that don't sit with me. I just want to, tell them what we can't do, because, you know, this is one of my worst nights here. I'm listening to this, I'm listening to things that happen, and all this type of stuff. What are we supposed to do? Are we gonna go forward, or are we gonna stand still? That's what. I can't articulate all the other guys. I just got to say it from the way I feel. It's not downing about, I got to say it the way I feel. What do you want me to say in Harborview when we building another warehouse? What I supposed to say? Well, I don't know what to tell them. What I'm gonna tell them? Because some people don't want to know about the northern part, and some people don't care about the southern part. So what I supposed to say? I'm not, I'm just saying this. It might sound different to y'all people, but I'm gonna say it the way I feel and understand. I just want to know, you talk with the group, I talk with the group, I defend the city, I just want to say, when they talk with y'all, just give them an answer. They don't want that answer, guess what? But I can live with that. But I can't live when they, somebody say, they did, they said so many things, and the school is affected, the homes are affected, this is affected. I'm not an expert on this warehouse stuff, but I know one thing. I was up there in Harborview a couple of times when it was built, when it was already built, 5:00 in the morning, I got up, and, you know, so I understand what they saying. I just want to make sure I can make a vote and really feeling right, that's the right thing to do. Okay, see, I get hit.
Vice Mayor. The manager would like to speak. Go ahead.
Vice Mayor, if I may address some of your concerns here. As we talk about schools, of course, what we propose is a buffer where institutional is in play, not agriculture, not conservation, but residential institutional, which schools fall under is institutional. So we have put the buffer in for that, whether it's 30 feet in the wall or a 60-foot and 8-foot burn with landscaping. As existing facilities, as in Harborview, we're not going to be able to address existing facilities under this ordinance. That's already in play.
I understand that. I do understand that. Don't get me down, understand that. I'm just saying that, we talking about warehouses. Are we gonna still have warehouses in this city? New warehouses coming?
I expect we will.
Okay, so how are we gonna prevent what we got now? That's what I'm saying.
That's what this ordinance is all about.
Right, that's right. That's what we have to say to them. Okay, you're right, we growing. Some things that we haven't done before, we doing it now. And that's what I want to, that's what I want, that's all I asked of, that's what we got to tell the, tell the people, because until we stop saying we gonna do warehouses, we gotta get some answers.
Yeah. Well, and of course, the concern here is that we're not going far enough, is the question.
Far enough for what?
Far enough in restricting certain activities.
Okay. You don't think if somebody's told some of these people that, they can understand, they can, I understand that.
That's their point.
That's what I'm just trying to say. You know, do them got, do their group come up and come up with ideas, this much paper this, much of the paper you gave me, and they talk with us, and then seem like they don't hear nothing back? That's, what I supposed to say, hide from the people that want to talk with me? I don't know. Then I got to sit up here and twist and, about warehouse. If we gonna do this, we gonna make sure what we do, we gonna be serious about it, so they know we serious, or where we want to go, because right now, there can be some more warehouse coming, there's more property there, we got to make sure, and I want to make sure while I'm sitting up here, that I understand quite well, you can't build over there, or we can't do this, how far it supposed to be? That's all I ask, man, even for me. Let me stop, because I don't want to keep, I don't want to pass my councilman who spoke earlier. Thank you. I'm finished.
Councilman Fawcett?
Just a question for a couple little things. I'm not going to drag this. Just to go back, the manager kind of stated a minute ago, this has got nothing to do with existing warehouses as it stands today. That's not it. It's any warehouse that comes forward with an application futuristic. The truck routing is, I got a little bit of a burr with the truck routing, and I'm experiencing this right now today. I mean, I'm not picking on any one group or any one industry or any of that, but Northgate is beginning to be very busy, and it's going to get busier, because we have more coming there. The truck route is, you know, you sat there and said, well, we would like to make sure they use 664 versus whatever. I can tell you right now, sitting here, that the truck traffic on Shoulders Hill Road has declined a little bit, but that is a truck route sign right there before you exit Northgate, indicating all trucks use 664. It ain't happening. So my question is, as we go forward, I just want to know, you talk about enforcement, I want you to tell me how you're gonna enforce it.
So with an approved document like a site plan, at that point, we have it on file from a regulatory perspective, that the developer is then responsible for where these trucks go, as approved by the city. Should they not be complying with that? It is the, it's on them, and it allows us to then issue zoning violations to the developer. Right now, how it works, it would be individual citations from the police department on the trucks that are violating the truck zone rules.
But you said developers?
Yes.
Well, the developer might develop it, but once he develops it, it goes over to a permanent person.
The developer or the occupant, the user.
Okay, so you can send a violation notice to the occupant. What's that violation notice look like? I am just very curious about this.
It would be a zoning violation that would give them a specified amount of time to correct the action. Should they not, fines come into place and/or court action?
What is the fine?
I do not have that information off the top of my head.
And the reason I'm bringing that forward is, if I'm the building occupant, and I'm got trucks coming in, and I can't control every truck that comes to my facility, and we tell them, hey, you're supposed to use this truck route, and he decides to go a different route, you're gonna come in with a violation notice, and it's monetary, you know what I'm gonna do? The average guy? I'm gonna pay it and say goodbye, until the next one happens, then I'll pay it and go by. So the teeth in it is virtually pay the fine. That's it. And, and big warehouses are probably going to do that. They're not gonna, they're not going to waste time with us and the truck route things and this nature, but I'm just a little concerned about that, because we deal with this up on the north end right now, in areas that posted signs, there's no through trucks on Shoulders Hill Road. But the problem is, they get up to a certain point on Shoulders Hill Road, they got nowhere to go but to go through Shoulders Hill Road, which is, you know, it's just the way it is. But when we get this next warehouse sitting right there on Shoulders Hill Road, trust what I'm telling you, this truck route thing will be nothing but verbiage on a piece of paper, because we're gonna have four warehouses coming up on Shoulders Hill Road probably in the next couple of years, right there, just after the cemetery. They're not gonna, you know, they're not gonna pay attention, they don't pay attention now, but they're not gonna pay attention to come out of that warehouse and go down to Nazbitt Parkway to go Portwood Boulevard, 664, because I can't get them to come out of Northgate now and use that route. So I'm just concerned how this is going to go. It looks good on paper, but truck routing doesn't have any teeth, other than pay the fine, get a violation. And that's problematic, because, you know, we want businesses to come, but then again, we're trying to figure a way out to regulate every move they're gonna make, and I find that's going to be very difficult, because we're not doing it now with what we have today. So it's going to be interesting to see how we're gonna do this when the future warehouses come online. I think the mayor brought this up one time. This is just, this is just a start, this is not a final document. This document can be modified, changed, or go forward with any other endendums to it as we move forward, correct?
Absolutely.
I mean, as long as it takes, if we got to keep coming back, coming back, coming back. I mean, we have something in front of us, but I don't want people to think this is the end-all of this document, because it's not. We have the right to come back and modify this as it's needed. However we do that, this body gets the opportunity to continue to modify this document. We've had a lot of input, of course, from different people about warehouse issues, truck traffic, truck parking, trucks make noise. For instance, the young lady that just came up and spoke. Kevin's worked diligently with UPS and that group that's at the end of where the old GE warehouse used to be, to try to mitigate some of that noise. We recognize there's noise there. So they did put a wall up. They got an 8-foot wall, I don't know the length of it, I haven't seen the length of that wall, Kevin maybe knows, but obviously, it hasn't fixed a problem over there. And as I stated earlier, one of the biggest issues over there that helps contribute to that noise is those multiple speed bumps these cats have got to go over. If you don't believe me, take your time, go over there, sit there for a while, you'll get my drift, and I can understand why people complain in the other neighborhoods. These speed bumps are not little, they're rather large. So I understand where she's coming from. I understand what we're trying to do for futuristic, and we're gonna try to do everything we can to mitigate, you know, you know, getting into the process of infringing on a residential area, or, you know, whatever the area is that the warehouses are going into. We'll probably be faced with that very shortly, with one coming, as I said, on Shoulders Hill, because it backs up, a majority of that's going to back up to Bob White. That's one neighborhood, and you got a new neighborhood next to that going up, and you got Suffolk Meadows, just right down the street, that is consistently getting hammered. So we're gonna have to do as much as we can to mitigate as many things as we can, but allow the business to come to the city, because we don't want to disturb businesses to come. So, you know, I'm open for anything that makes it right, but I don't want to go to the point where, because somebody else in another jurisdiction does something different, doesn't mean that applies and fits here for us. So I applaud, we've done some work. I'm not going to agree or disagree whether we've gone far enough, but it's a starting point somewhere. I think everybody has to recognize that, and if we truly have talked to the industry, that's a big plus, because they're the ones that have to mitigate those warehouses on a day-to-day basis. So anyway, that's all I wanted to know. I'm just a little perplexed with the routing, because I don't, I kind of feel it's going to be ineffective. You know, as far as I'm concerned, it's, you know, it's on paper, but until I see some proof that it's working, then it's not getting in my head right. I can't, with people that are having issues. But I thank you.
Councilmember Butler Barlow.
Thank you, Mayor. Kevin, don't go far. So I have a couple of questions about the setbacks, because to me, it's, it's pretty complicated, because we have a 30-foot option, and we have a 60-foot with a berm, and we have a fence and a sound. Is there any way that we can simplify that? And, well, let me ask first, do you have any kind of a feel from industry? Are people going to go with 30 feet and an 8-foot wall, or do you think they're going to be amenable to the 60-foot? Because, you know, I'll be honest with you, the 60-foot and the berm and the vegetation is more appealing to me than the other, but do you have any feel, is, you know, is that just going to be the preference of the developer, or is there some guidance from the city? You know, is one better than the other? I mean, it just seems to me it's, it's pretty complicated, and I think as the buildings get taller, then we add a foot, and, help me, because it's confusing.
Yeah, so that last part there, that relates to our building setbacks, those are not impacted by this at all. And I think to answer your question, it really depends on a variety of factors. One, the size of the property is going to dictate a lot of this. I think the preference for the city and the development community would be to utilize that 60-foot setback with the berm for a variety of reasons, cost probably being one of those. But each site is unique, each user is unique, they'll design these sites to meet these regulations within, within the realm of what they determine is feasible.
Okay, and so, but help me with this, so as the building height increases, we add, we add, I mean, the setback becomes larger, is that correct?
Yes, so the height requirement as it stands, and once again, this does not impact this ordinance at all. This is our current building height requirements as it relates to our dimensional standards. This is our current building height requirements as it relates to our dimensional standards. This is going back into Article Four of the UDDO. Once again, not on the table tonight, but industrial properties, users in the M2 district, they do have the ability, I think M1 as well, to provide for, if I recall correctly, for each additional 12 feet of height on a building, to provide an additional 50-foot setback for, for each portion of that 12 feet. But once again, that's, that's not on the table tonight. As it relates to the setbacks, we were really concerned, not necessarily with building setbacks, but the site improvements that are right now can be built right up to the property line. That's what we're aiming. Distance solves or helps to alleviate a lot of our concerns, whether that's trucks idling or, you know, trucks going over speed bumps, whatever. Loading, for instance, another one. So the further we move those away, the loading areas, the parking area, the decibels reduce. You incorporate a vegetated buffer as well, that'll work to break it up. So the options as it relates to that setback for parking areas and, and things of that nature, you have those options, 30-foot with a wall or 60-foot with a berm.
Okay, and there's, there's a vegetation requirement no matter what?
Absolutely.
Okay, and that can be, that's within, I mean, obviously the 60-foot, it's very obvious, but the 30-foot, it's, it's within that 30 feet?
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry to be dense, but it's 10 o'clock, so.
There are a lot of layers to this.
Yeah, thank you very much. And I agree, I, you know, I think this is an excellent start. I appreciate staff's time. I know that there's been a lot of thought put into it and I know that there are still concerns. I'm hoping that we can have, I don't know what it looks like, but a working group or, you know, something to continue to review this as we go forward to make sure we're, that we've got things the way they need to be. And if we don't, that we can continue to make changes to adjust it. But I think it's, I like the idea of getting something in place since we have nothing. And so I'm glad we're where we are and hope that we will continue to look at this as we go along. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to be very brief because what I've got to say echoes a lot of what has already been said. I'm not unsympathetic to the noise problem associated with any industrial activity. Over there in the lakeside section of the city where I live, trains come through there all day and all night long. And somewhere near my house, there must be a crossing where they must be required to blow their horn 10 times. I mean, and it's just, and, you know, usually it's 3:00, 3:30 in the morning. Some of the trains that go by, actually, they're heavy enough that the little drawer handles on my dresser will vibrate in the middle of the night. Oh, the ding, 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 ding. And, you know, I know a train's going by. So I'm not unsympathetic to the noise thing. I know the young lady said that she's been a half a mile away from her house jogging and has heard the trucks. Well, you know, a half mile, if my math is correct, is 2,640 feet or almost the equivalent of nine football fields. I mean, I don't think that would be a realistic setback for any requirement for, for, for anything because obviously nothing would be able to be built warehouse-wise in the city of Suffolk. I kind of taken, likened this back to solar farms. You know, when we got hit with solar farms, we put together a very hasty ordinance in regards to solar farms. And then bam, we got slammed with that one on 460. And we realized this is not what we want solar farms in the city of Suffolk to look at, look like. So we went back and we massaged the ordinance. And a couple of more came before us and we said, you know, we still don't have it right. So we went back and we massaged the ordinance again. And I think it went through at least one more permutation before we are where we are now. I don't think anybody will come out and tell you that this is a perfect document. What we got presented back in September was a good first step from the planning department. I think they did their homework, did the best they could. But when you throw it out in front of the public and throw it out in front of this body, obviously a lot of issues get brought up that perhaps were not considered at the first go-round of the thing. So we sent the thing back and some of the stakeholders have been talked to, their input has been received. Obviously, not all recommendations from both sides have been incorporated into this document. But I, I think it's important with what we potentially have coming down the road to get something in place because this is much better than nothing. Nothing is what resulted in what we have now. So with that having been said, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to make a recommendation or a motion that OTA 2023-007 with the amended language about the truck routing be approved.
Can we get a motion for approval from Councilman Rector? Councilman Johnson?
Okay, and I, I mimic what John said as far as where we are on this. We need something on paper. It should have been on paper before we ever started on 58, but you don't want me to go wherever, where I really would like to go? We have made a mess of this for years. This is a start, very much like the solar analogy. Very good, John, that was good. That's exactly where we are now. Our solar, solar is still not right and we're still making a mess of that. I don't want this to be a mess. We don't have the time anymore. So I will approve it tonight as well, but we have got to have a working group working on this constantly until we get it right. And if that means having a group committee from the city, we've got good people in this city that have spent a lot of time on this and they probably know more than we do. But my point being, this is not exactly right yet. It's better, but that would be my, if we're going to, if we're going to approve it tonight, I want to make sure we're going to continue working on it, that we're going to keep moving in a positive direction. Because Kevin, this is good. I mean, I'm, most of it is exactly what it should be, but it's not going to fix all the problems we currently have. And we don't want the problems in the future. That's my problem. And I even have a problem with building houses. I said it tonight earlier, where we have these, these facilities because the two don't go together. You don't put neighborhoods, and we're talking about doing some more of it on 58, neighborhoods with warehouses. They don't flow, they don't work together. We need to protect the people that are living in these communities now. And that's why I will vote in favor of this tonight because we've got so much coming up on 460 project. We've got to make sure we have protections in place. So I applaud what we've done, but we are not, we are not there quite yet. I'm hoping the 2045 plan is going to actually give us some more leverage with this thing. And I feel comfortable that it might. Maybe we can change some zonings and do some different things, but we, we need to keep this thing moving forward. So with that, I'll vote in favor, I'll second it as a matter of fact.
Okay, we got a motion for approval from Councilman Rector and a second from Councilman Johnson. Councilman Bennett.
Thank you. I just want to make a few comments on this. I know this is something that we've been talking about and staff has been working on trying to come up with some plan. They've been listening to council, they've been listening to citizens and different, and what they're saying tonight. They have met with developers, they've met with the port, and they have gotten input from them. So they're, they're not going to implement everything that everyone wants. They can't do it. It will not work. So they have to find a happy medium that will overall work in the city, not just because I don't want it near me. It's got to be where, and it's going to be something that will cover the entire city, not just one area. And I know it started with the warehouse and then the warehouse on Shoulders Hill Road and with it being so close to Bob White and the other residents there. And we had to look at how close are we going to look at having warehouses and that type of businesses, M2, next to residential properties? And that's where it got, where a lot of it got started. And I think a lot of time has been put forth in making, trying to come up with some workable reason and something to work with until we can finally get it like we did the UDO. It was not done overnight. We passed the UDO, then we made amendments. So with this, it can be passed. You see something that needs to be amended, you can go back, council can amend it. So it's nothing that is put here that can't be changed at some time. But at least it gives you a working tool to start working with for the future of what we want this city to look like and how we're going to try to manage this type of growth. And that's the thing that I just want, I'm not going to take a half an hour to tell that. That's just the way that I feel that we need to do. I think you're heading in the right direction. We need to continue to talk about it, but everybody not going to be pleased. I don't care how much time you put in it, you're not going to please everyone because everyone will have a different opinion and they have that right. So what you have to do is do the best you can, make the best presentation to council and council will make the final decision on what the final outcome will be of this. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, word?
Yes, I don't want to be twisted because it seems like I'm for the idea. And Kevin, I know you do hard work. Al do, we talk about this. So what I'm saying to you, it takes that, which I explained to the people, that it's not the final. So we make, if we make a decision tonight, are we telling them that? No, they didn't know that when we vote for it, but it took all us to sit down and make your, make your comments for you to come out and say, well, you know, this is not the perfect one. That's what I'm trying to say from the get-go. I mean, certain things got to be done and put, y'all put it in one perspective, I put it in another perspective, but we saying the same thing. We saying the same thing. It took for me to come out and blow smoke for you to come out and say, this is what we have to do. I mean, I, I don't see how I'm so far wrong. Now, it sounds better when I go talk with the people, say, you hear what we said, at least we're going to tell them. They don't know what you're thinking. I'm just saying, that's fine. I'm satisfied with it. I know you work hard, man. That's why when we said 60 days and I said, how much are we going to know about it? And you, and Al, you showed up, gave me enough to read on and look at to understand what I didn't understand 60 days ago. So I'm with it. But what I'm saying, now we got to explain to them, work in progress. Ain't nothing wrong with that. Ain't nothing wrong with that. But some things y'all take it another way and I'm trying to go this way, but take me to come out and have to say something like this. I'm fine, I'm fine with all of y'all what you're saying. But now, since you said, well, this is not, this is not it, we going, you can't satisfy everybody or, we didn't say that, we just were just going to vote. If we didn't have to come, they don't know we had to come back, we're going to change it. I'm not against it. I'm voting yes, right. We do have something. We have something to work on, but we work on, let's work on to the way that we looking at it for, for the city and we always have future, but it seems like that's, and the people, they understand. We, we hear them. We hear them. So it's not like saying, you go and say, I'm voting against it. No, I'm not voting against it. We have something, I can look at this, I'm reading all this here. Now, I understand it. I just don't know before 500 feet, 30 feet, 60 feet, berm and all that. How many people know about berm only looking at TV? Okay? Act like they know, but how many people know what we talking about vessel and all that? How many people really understand this? But the warehouses, they understand? Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilman Rector for approval, a second from Councilman Johnson, and we have comments by Councilman Williams.
Well, I, I just want to echo what, what my fellow, fellow council members have been saying. This is a living, breathing document and it's subject to change. So it's a start. We appreciate the effort you put in it and to, and to creating this. And I'm for the approval of it tonight, but we just need the public to understand that it is, it is a living document that's subject to change. And with that, I am in full support.
Okay, going back to the motion to approve and Councilman Rector, I need you to make that motion for approval with the amendment which related to truck routing, which was sending trucks to the nearest.
That was the amendment, Mayor. That was the, that was the motion.
He told me, he told me. Not that I'm going, not that I'm going to throw him under the bus, but that's what that was. Now I'm going to back over him. Okay, just a couple of brief comments and I will be very brief because I'm going to try to be on an up note instead of a down note here. This is awesome. I don't care what you're going to say about it. It's awesome. Compared to what we had, this is more than a minor improvement, this is a major improvement. I wanted to thank the manager, all the staff and everyone who put the time in putting this thing together. It came to us in September. We felt like it wasn't quite enough, it went back again. Here we are in November. The difference between warehouses and solar farms is that all solar farms require a conditional use permit. So really, it may, it was what you got on the books. There's nothing allowed by right. On the other flip side, warehouses are allowed by right in certain zoning designations. So without these guidelines, they can happen tomorrow. So I am elated that we've come to this point, made the changes that we did. I think it is, it's not even close to what we have. If you look at what we, we dealt with, the rezoning in Harborview and that adjacent M1, we've got trucks literally backed up to the property line. That can't happen with this new ordinance. This 60-foot setback is not just a 60-foot setback for the building, it's a 60-foot setback for everything. And I mean, it's 60-foot setbacks for not only buildings, drives, parking areas, stacking areas, loading areas, trash areas, storage areas, pretty much everything. It's got to be that far off of there before you get to the buildings. So there's some really good stuff there. I'm a little concerned about the noise. It's been brought up that all of this is wonderful, but we have to be able to enforce some of these things, you know, and we, we definitely need to, that's something that we can do without changing this. We can address the enforcement end of it, be it trucks parking where they don't belong, be it trucks taking routes that they're not supposed to take, and the noise ordinances. These, these are things that we can address without changing one little word on this piece of paper. And I think that's where we need to put some emphasis right now so we can try to get people to do the right thing. But I am very, very pleased with what we have. And as everybody mentioned, you know, these things can get changed as we move forward. We can, we can make amendments to it. Councilman Bennett alluded to that in the UDO. He was here when they did the UDO and there's no telling how many amendments have been made to that based on our experience. Hopefully, we don't get burnt too bad until we make those changes. But I think with what we got in place, we've got a lot more protection than we ever thought about having. And I'm grateful for all the work that, that has gone into it. So with that being said, council members, we have a motion for approval with the amendment. Prepare to cast your vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please accord the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Okay, I believe that was our last public hearing. Make sure I'm in the right place. Nope. Yes. Now, now we move to ordinances and we have an ordinance to grant relief from the 10-year post-conveyance holding period for a parcel of land identified as tax map parcel 30 asterisk 3C created through a family transfer conveyance in accordance with Section 31-514 of the Unified Development Ordinance. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, again, Mr. Mine's going to give the staff report on this.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mayor, Vice Mayor. Once again, waiting for the PowerPoint to come up. Oh, you're about to go on a journey with me through all my presentations this evening. Okay, so what we have before you this evening is consideration of a request to relieve a property owner from the 10-year holding period associated with a family transfer. This property is located on Kingsale Road in the Rural Agricultural Use District. So Section 31-514 regulates how land may be subdivided for the purposes of conveying to an immediate family member. Thus, the family transfer subdivision. to an immediate family member, thus the family transfer subdivision process. Deed restrictions are associated with those plats. Once approved, they must accompany the plat, restricting the sale, subdivision, or conveyance of that property from the receiving party for 10 years. Upon application from a family transfer recipient, a city council may find that a change in circumstances has occurred that was not anticipated, and upon receipt of the family transfer parcel, the proposed conveyance must be made to satisfy a financial obligation that was not contemplated at the time of the transfer. As such, we, we have received a request from the recipient in this case on a family transfer subdivision that was approved by Planning Commission on June 20th of this year. The plat was eventually recorded on July 7th, and the deed associated with that recorded on July 13th. On October 11th, we did receive a request from the recipient that there has been a change in circumstances outlined and detailed in ZF's report associated with that, detailing financial hardships particularly related to a change as it related to some medical situations. You can see here, the, in, highlighted in yellow and red, the, this is the parcel that was created, 3.64 acres, known as tax map 30 star 3C. The residue of the parcel, much larger, 164 acres, remains 30 star 3. But that is the item presented for your consideration this evening. I will stand by.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wine. An ordinance is presented for council's consideration, and a motion would be in order. Councilman Fawcett.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Certainly after reading the family document here, you know, it's, it's very evident that they're in a situation, in a tough spot. So I just want to say, you know, prayers with your family and all that, and hope for the best. And I'd like to make a motion to approve your request.
Okay, we got a motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett and Councilman Johnson.
And I'm very familiar with the situation, too. These are really good people, and I will second the motion.
Second from Councilman Johnson. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We have no resolutions this evening. We do have a staff report related to a significant land use application. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Thank you. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, close out the evening. We're going to bring Kevin back one more time.
I told him to rest up earlier when I talked to him. I don't know if he took that nap or not.
I apologize. Y'all have given such a heavy dose to me this evening. But we do have a significant land use item to present before you all, as promised. And you'll recall, we do this for what we call our hundreds, 100 units, 100 acres, 100,000 square feet. This just so happens to check that box for 100 acres. This is an application for a conditional use permit to establish a solar energy facility on property zoned ag located on the east side of Hozier Road. This, the facility as proposed would produce 69 megawatts of solar energy. Just to put that in perspective, that's the, the largest in the city currently is 15 megawatts, and this is a much larger facility, to include accessory uses associated with solar, the modules, the underground cables, inverters. This would be for eight parcels in total. The subject parcels, once again, are in the central growth area and in the inner ring suburban use district. These are the parcels here. There are some existing single-family dwellings located on two of the parcels. Those would be demolished to make way for this use. The parcels consisting of, currently consist of agricultural and forested land, with some wetlands in the vicinity as well, particularly as you get back to the swamp. Here's an exhibit provided by the applicant. It depicts the proposed layout, where the solar panels are, the access roads, where the stormwater facilities would be, landscape buffers and related improvements as it related to land cover and the surrounding uses. It is important to note, this is an excerpt from our Carolina Corridor Land Use Strategy Plan. This was conducted back in 2006 and adopted. But I've, I've circled the area in question here. It is within the growth area. Largely, solar facilities up to this point have been located outside of the growth area with the exception of the one next to Solinas. But this area highlighted is largely slated or planned for residential development along, along Hozier Road there. I just wanted to bring that to your attention, as that would certainly play into our consideration of it. So as it relates to this case, citizens can access information on this on our website. If you go to the planning website, you can click on rezonings, conditional use permit, public hearings tab. That would bring you to all the supplemental documents associated with this. The public hearing will be scheduled before the Planning Commission on December 19th, 2023, and a tentative public hearing based upon Planning Commission's consideration would be held before you all on January 17th of 2024. That concludes information on this item. I can stand by for any questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wine. Anybody else have any questions for Mr. Wine, who is still at the podium? Got one here, Councilman Fawcett.
Kevin, just as a suggestion, and I know you're in the preliminary stages of all this, but I had the opportunity to go out to the one on White Marsh. And the one thing that kind of grabbed me rather quickly is the inverter. And we're always told inverters don't make a whole lot of noise.
They do.
But there is an inverter out there that is closest to the road. And if you stand on the roadway, you can hear that inverter. So what we ought to try to do is see if they can push those inverters back. It may not be a factor where this is going, because there's not a lot of housing around it, but it's something to consider when we take a look at these, to try to get these inverters away, because you do have houses in some locations where they're at that are, that are having a little bit of effect from it. And so it would help to, to, to take that into consideration. The other question is, you said it's, it's kind of for residential, futuristic maybe, but is there, just a question, is there any utilities and infrastructure that far down on Hozier Road to accommodate any type of large family homes or whatever is slated for?
Not at this time. Not at this time.
So that, and that's quite, the infrastructure's probably quite a ways away from it. So I just... Factory Street? Factory Street? That's still a little distance, is it not? Not?
Yeah. No, this, it's in pretty close proximity to the downtown core. It's not far from the intersection of White Marsh.
So it could be developed...
And we've had development proposals on this property in the past.
Oh, you have? That's a good question. I was going to ask it. All right. All right, that's all I had.
And as it relates to your first point, stay tuned. The Planning Commission next week will, has a public hearing to consider solar amendments to our solar ordinance.
I hope you got something in there on the inverters. Thanks.
Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Wine. We'll move on to motions. We do have a couple of motions this evening. The first is a motion to schedule a public hearing for December 6th, 2023, to receive public comment on an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of permanent easements either by agreement or condemnation for the downtown sanitary sewer rehabilitation and replacement project. Johnson.
So moved.
We got a motion for approval, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Fawcett.
I'll second his motion.
Second from Councilman Fawcett. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next motion is a motion to schedule a joint work session of City Council and the School Board for Wednesday, December 6th, 2023, at 3:00 PM unless canceled. And a motion would be in order. Councilman Rector.
So moved.
And a motion for approval, Councilman Rector, Councilman Williams. Second that... Second from Councilman Williams. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Madam Clerk, do we have any non-agenda speakers? And if so, please explain the timing system.
No, we have no non-agenda speakers this evening.
All right. Everybody want to have... Madam Clerk, do we have any new business?
No new business from the city clerk this evening.
Any new business from council? And I'd also like to throw a suggestion out there, maybe based on the hour that we forego comments from council.
I'll, I'll say move.
Did y'all...
I'll make that motion.
What happened? Oh, no, Jen's going to take care of her stuff. No, I say forego comments and announcements from council members this evening. Do we have a motion for that? And if we don't, that's okay. Okay, Councilman Rector got in there first.
I'll, I'll make that motion if I can just throw in a quick PSA.
Councilman Williams.
I make that a motion. I make that a motion, sir.
I think I already got a motion you get to do the second.
Oh, second.
In a second. Or any, any discussion? Councilmember Butler, Butler? What happened?
He didn't make a motion.
Oh, he didn't make a motion? Because you can't do your PSA, is that it?
I'll second it.
Okay, we got a motion from Councilman Williams and a second from Councilman Rector. Do we have any further discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Okay, now we'll move to announcements from our media and community relations director, Jennifer Moore.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, city manager. I'll start the announcements off with a reminder that the city of Suffolk will observe the upcoming Thanksgiving holiday, and city offices will be closed starting at noon on Wednesday, November 22nd, and will resume normal operations on Monday, November 27th at 8:30 AM. Trash and recycling will operate on a one-day delay starting on Thursday, and Suffolk Transit will not operate on Thursday. Just a quick reminder that the Great Suffolk Cleanup is this Friday and Saturday, and we're currently at 986 volunteers, volunteers, so we need your help to hit the 1,500 mark. This two-day cleanup event is seeking volunteers from local groups, organizations, businesses, and individuals to help pick up trash across the city. For more information or to sign up, visit SuffolkVA.us/cleanup. Suffolk Parks and Rec is proud to kick off the holiday season with the annual Grand Illumination Ceremony this Friday, November 17th at 6:00 PM at Market Park in downtown Suffolk. This family-friendly event offers festive seasonal music, live performances, complimentary horse-drawn carriage rides, and of course, a visit from Santa himself. For more information, visit SuffolkVA.us. Suffolk Tourism is excited to share their farm-to-table Thanksgiving market, Farmers' Market on Monday, November 20th and Tuesday, November 21st, from 3:00 to 6:30 PM at the Suffolk Visitor Center. This two-day event will feature local farmers and artisan food vendors that are ready to help with your last-minute ingredients or treats to complete your Thanksgiving meal. For more information, visit SuffolkVAFarmersMarket.com. Suffolk Economic Development Department invites you to get your holiday shopping done and support your local community by joining in the celebration of Small Business Saturday. On Saturday, November 25th, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM, the heart of downtown Suffolk will transform into a holiday marketplace showcasing the best of what the local business community has to offer. Nearly 60 handpicked vendors offering an array of unique goods and services. Downtown Suffolk's Small Business Saturday promises an unforgettable experience for shoppers. For more information, visit DowntownSufficVA.com. And Suffolk Parks and Rec is proud to announce the return of its Festival of Lights at Sleepy Hole Park. This free festive drive-through light show is a sure way to spark your holiday spirit. The display will open the day after Thanksgiving and be open Thursday through Sunday until the two weeks leading up to Christmas, when it is available daily. For more information, visit SuffolkVA.us. And the Suffolk Public Library is excited to announce that Morgan Memorial Library is now home to a WHRO Library Corner. Due to a generous partnership with WHRO Public Media, the children's area of the Morgan Memorial Library is now equipped with books for a variety of age levels, as well as resource information for parents and caregivers to encourage their child's educational development. All items from the WHRO Library Corner are free for library goers to take. For more information, visit SuffolkPublicLibrary.com. And of course, on your screen are the various ways for residents to stay connected to the city of Suffolk. Thank you and have a good night.
All right, thank you, Ms. Moore. Okay, we just squashed comments. I'm going to take a little male privilege on behalf of every... Hey, that's too bad, too bad, too bad, too bad. Look, like my wife says, you never pay attention to the rules. I say we don't pay attention to them when you make them. So I just want to speak for everybody on council. I think we can, I can say for everybody up here, wish all our citizens a very safe Thanksgiving holiday as they celebrate their time with their family and friends, and we'll catch them next time. And I do have a quote by Maya Angelou, kind of to go along with that, and that is, "Let gratitude, let gratitude be the pillow upon which you kneel to say your nightly prayer." And with that, I will ask for an adjournment. Got a motion for adjournment from Councilman Fawcett. Do I get a second? No seconds? Oh, second from Councilman Williams. This meeting stands adjourned. Oh, and we get a vote. Please prepare to cast your vote. I'm going as fast as I can. Please, please prepare to cast your vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
This meeting stands adjourned.